All right, I now call the RCS work session for January tenth to order, please rise for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the fiscal with liberty and justice for all.
We please have the reading of the mission statement.
Richmond Community Schools guides students on pathways of learning to a future of limitless possibilities.
Thank you, and the vision?
Richmond Community Schools is a collaborative community nurturing mind, body, and spirit. Prepare students for their lives of choice, purpose, and service.
All right, uh, next we have public commentary. Bridget, do we have anyone signed up for public commentary?
No.
Um, moving on then, we have, uh, the election of officers. So, um, what we're gonna do is open the floor, and the floor being too large, uh, nominations for the office of president.
President, I would like to nominate Nicole Stoltz.
Okay, well, thank. So we have, um, a nomination and a second, and I would, um, I'd like to decline, thank you very much. Um, I have, it's been an honor to be the president over the past year. Um, however, at this point in, um, my family situation, I'm not gonna have, uh, the time that's needed to do the duties. So, thank you, um, do we need to vote then on that?
Was there a motion to close the nominations?
No.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations?
Yes, so are there any other nominations for president?
I'll nominate Brad Walton.
So we have a nomination, a second. Great, so a second. Well, Brad, would you, will you accept the nomination?
I'll accept it.
Okay, so then do we have a motion, um, for Brad to be the next president?
Have a motion, we have.
That's our nominations.
Okay.
Go ahead, I'll second. Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor with Brad as president, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay, vote passes six to one, all right. Um, do I continue down, or do I officially take the gavel out of my hand and whether in his? Okay, you did not vote for yourself?
I, I just.
You abstained, okay. Five to one, got it. Okay, and I'm like passing the gavel, we got Ron for proceeding, okay? We're good?
Can we entertain a motion or discussion for vice president?
I'd like to nominate Kristen Brunton.
The vice president?
Second.
I accept the nomination, yes.
Whoever, whoever I'm directing this to, oh, uh, President Walton, uh, hearing no other motions for vice president, move the nomination closing. Second.
All right, nomination closed. All in favor of Member Brunton being vice president, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It passes six to zero.
Who's?
All right, for secretary. Um, can I entertain a motion to nominate Emma for secretary?
I nominate Nicole Stoltz for secretary. I accept the nomination.
Yes, we second.
Okay, I'll wait. You better agree with that.
I'll second the nomination.
Accept.
I'd like to nominate Pete Zaleski. Secretary.
I'll second, do a second one.
I will then move this nomination, we'll put one of these two names.
All right, so we have two nominations, I will vote on the first nomination, which was Nicole Stoltz. All those in favor of Member Stoltz being the secretary, state by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
It says three, three.
I'm sorry, I'm keeping notes. Did I know who said no, just so I can have that.
I've generated a call roll on that. Okay, so. Uh, Member Stoltz, you abstained, um, Zaleski is a nay, I'm sorry, let's just go down. Ms. Pickering?
Nay.
Nay. Mr. Weber?
Nay.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. Zaleski?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Mr. Brunton?
Aye.
And I am aye. Okay, so it's like three, three.
No action.
No action?
Yeah.
Okay. So, next is nomination for Mr. Zaleski. All those in favor of Mr. Zaleski being the secretary, please state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Say aye.
Nay. So that is a two, okay, we'll have to poll on that one too. Uh, Member Stoltz?
Aye, or nay, sorry, nay.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
I am a nay, Ms. Brunton?
Nay.
Mr. Stevens?
Aye.
Yeah, Ms. Pickering?
Aye.
Okay, that did not pass. That did not pass, so.
Yeah, you're voting, you're voting this three, three?
Three, three on the first one and two in favor for.
Why aren't, why aren't there seven votes?
The person being nominated abstains, correct?
They don't have to, no, they have a right to vote.
They can.
So there, I, I think if that was the understanding that you were operating on, I would suggest that you re-vote on both candidates.
Okay, we'll vote, revote on both candidates.
Technically, they're both three, three then, because Pete, you did vote for yourself. Yeah.
The only time that you're required, what are, what are you just saying?
Open the floor for nominations for secretary and start anew.
There you go. We're going to reopen the floor for nomination of your secretary or secretary.
The only time that you're required to abstain from voting for yourself is if there's a conflict of interest. There's a good vote, Chris.
Sorry, I set a bad precedent there.
That would be a conflict of interest, but yes, I see what you're saying.
Set a bad precedent, all right. So I will open the floor for nominations for secretary.
I nominate Nicole Stoltz.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Good. Is there any other nominations? Okay, seen none. All in favor of Nicole Stoltz being president, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Secretary.
Secretary.
I'm sorry, what did I say? I'm sorry, secretaries. Yeah, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, it passes with a seven, no vote. Good, secretary. All right. This is, now we're to the appointments in four point O two. The board approves the following recommendations as presented. The board is voting to approve the following recommendations as presented. This is Jamie Bolzer, will be chief financial officer, the appointed school treasurer for Richmond Community Schools for the period of January one, twenty twenty four, through December thirty first, twenty twenty four. I'm just reading the script, may I ask, sir, if you would like to make those recommendations, they're already.
President Walton Trustees, I come before you this evening to ask for approval of the following improvements as presented. This is Jamie Bolzer to be appointed as chief financial officer, uh, I'm sorry, who serves as chief financial officer. To be appointed school treasurer for Richmond Community Schools for the period of January first through December thirty first of twenty twenty four as presented. I also come before you to ask for approval of Mil- Mrs. Melissa Swarver, who is our deputy treasurer for the appointment period of January first through December thirty first of twenty twenty four. That the board of school trustees appoint the following persons as representatives for Richmond Community Schools authorized to open and tabulate bids. Myself as superintendent, Mr. Jamie Bolzer, Mr. Alex Hazelbaker, technology director, Mrs. Melissa Swarver, business coordinator, as well as deputy treasurer for business affairs, and also Mrs. Karen Scout, our chief operations officer. In addition, I come for approval that Ron Crawlson, Beaver, Boston Forest, and Crawlson-Sickman be appointed school attorney for Richmond Community Schools for the period of January first through December thirty first of twenty twenty four, and approve the contract as presented. Finally, I come before you all to ask for approval that the school board trustees appoint representatives for Richmond Community Schools to the following Indiana School Board Association staff. Redevelopment commission, Mr. Pete Zaleski, legislative liaison, Mr. John Weber, and to the ISBA delegate, Mr. Aaron Stevens, as presented.
Member Stevens? Um, I'd like to, uh, not accept the legislative liaison positions. I don't know if anyone else is interested, I'm sorry, I should have gave notice earlier.
Got relationships with both of our state legislators, have already have regular contact with them.
And you, would you be willing to do both, or is someone else interested in maybe doing their redevelopment?
If I mean, if I, I would do this, I would, uh, make the motion, uh, that we elect Pete Zaleski to serve as the legislative liaison. I have a second motive, but we need to act on that one first instead of having two, because they're two separate positions.
I'd be willing to second that. If, unless there's other interest or discussion.
Okay, this is a whole docket here, so, um.
Can you just remove?
Say what you would like to do, and then Mr. Doctor Wright can make the recommendation.
Change, I would, I would nominate Pete Zaleski for the position of the legislative liaison, and and I would also, uh, nominate, uh, Kim Pickering for the redevelopment commission.
So given that, I understand this recommendation, so you modify our previous recommendation, getting back to what is declined to represent also as legislative liaison, and so with that, I now come back before you all to ask for approval that Mr. Pete Zaleski serve as our board legislative liaison, and that Miss Kim Pickering serve as our redevelopment commission. As presented.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions?
That's fine.
I, yeah, I accept.
Okay, so I need a motion.
I moved to approve the recommendations as presented with the changes, uh, the change recommendations for legislative liaison and redevelopment commission.
I'll second.
All right, questions or comments? Uh, first of all, Ms. Pickering, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Zaleski, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I would just say I appreciate the extra time, John, that you put in, and Kim, you're going to, and Pete, already what you've done, because I know these extra positions are just extra, so appreciate the work on this.
And I, I mean, I, I don't think I was particularly effective in that position. I mean, I enjoy that somewhat, but I think Pete has better contacts, and I think, I think that'll be a good move for us.
I disagree with Member Weber, because he says he doesn't think that he did a good job, and he kept us, he kept us up today on so much, so.
Thanks. He also represented the board, so I want to.
All right.
Uh, one other comment, thank you to, because we're also, um, our agreement with Ron Crawlson, forty-six years, is that right? In consecutive, well, I mean.
You don't have to answer that question.
I believe that's a good question.
Thank you.
Member Stevens, your second, I love the, you can somewhere.
I never catch up.
All right, all those in favor of, uh, adopting the recommendation as presented, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Passes seven, zero.
Cam, I've already sent you the, uh, notice of the next meeting for February thirteenth.
Got it, thanks, great.
We're now at a second O three, approval of existing policies and guidelines.
President Walton Trustees, I come before you all this evening to ask for approval of all existing policies and guidelines as posted on the Richmond Community Schools website as presented.
You have any motion?
I move your approval, four point O three, to approve all existing policy and guidelines as presented.
May the member Stevens?
Second.
Second by Ms. Brunton, are any comments or questions? Seen done, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Passes seven, zero. All right, now we are on to action items. The spirit turf, or, I'm sorry, sprint turf agreement.
President Walton Trustees, I ask that Karen Scout come before us. Back to nine point zero.
Good evening, uh, tonight before you is the formal agreement with Sprinturf earlier, um, in December, you approved the, um, on the turf, and this is just the formal agreement, finishing everything up. Um, if we complete this tonight, we will be able to complete everything before it affects all seasons, um, next summer, so that is very encouraging. And, um, everything is as it was, um, passed originally in that proposal. So, um, all of the, the funds, uh, needed are as they were accepted at that time. Um, payment terms are thirty days, um, after each segment of work, as you can see, um, in that document is complete. And, um, then, um, all other information is pretty good. So, um, you have any questions, I'm gonna open the form for that, but, um, it's my recommendation that I approve the agreement with Sprinturf as presented.
I move that we accept action item five point four one.
Motion by Member Stoltz, second. Any comments or questions?
This will put us on track for this summer, for sure.
Yeah, so they'll finish, so they'll start as soon as track season is completed. Then they'll have everything on the very last date, unless there is weather, which we have to all understand is a natural part of this process. Um, should be complete by July ninth. So that's the, the Monday after, um, or, or you. Moratorium, I was gonna call it something else, but it's a little less formal, so, yes, moratorium week, so we thought that that was a great way to start this.
Can you remind me the life of this turf? I know that we're at the end of the life of this, the current turf, so what is the new?
So, under the original, um, the base was eight years. We extended that with the additional better per product, um, to be a ten-year warranty. Um, so they did expect that we could possibly get twelve years out of it if we take care of it. Now, um, the last, you know, couple of years will be the non-care and things like that. Um, it just depends on where, so ten years would be our expectation at this point, um, hopefully we can get more, but um, sometimes it's about aesthetics, just because it's used so much, it kind of depends on all of that, but.
Is there a quickener? That, as far as the care goes, that we might be able to extend it a couple of years?
We actually wrote that into this agreement, so we are actually getting a machine this time, not just a room. Um, that will sweep the field and take a little bit gentler care of it. We will also have rooms, because that's a natural way that you take care of it. But, um, this will actually make it much quicker and, um, is a little, um, simpler for our staff, um, to get it done. Um, especially, we have, um, now at Ternan, we used to have two dedicated staff members, we have one, and then we float people if needed. Um, so this provides that area with a little bit, um, quicker management of it, and, and definitely better provided for it, so are excited to see what that means and how it works.
Any other comments or questions? All right, we have a motion and a second, any, um, all those in favor of adopting the sprint turf agreement, state by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries seven, zero.
The mission, present. You know, Karen, uh, we're talking our major facility, our sports facilities, what, what are some of the things when I was there, uh, for a basketball game this past week or whatever, it seems like there's some renovations going on in Ternan, and just, what, what are we doing, just for curiosity?
Yeah, so, um, we were updating the paint, um, and then we'll be, we'll be doing a little bit, um, throughout the year, you'll see some, some signage updates. You'll see, um, that read in their partnership with us, they're providing us signage, and then we're gonna do some as well. Um, you can already see some of that signage that, um, Professor Bolzer in athletics has started. We're gonna continue that process and build on that, um, we will be, um, we're, we're working through, um, each of the stairwells, um, making sure that that kind of returns to a, a way in which we can honor, um, all of our special teams throughout the years, and then, um, we will, we will eventually be painting all of the rest of the downstairs of Ternan um, as funds allow, so that's the plan, um, it has needed a refresh for a little while. It is very natural that that paint requires that over so many years, and it was just the normal time, um, but it was, it, it needed it really bad, and, um, over the break, it was a little bit longer. So the original plan was that we could have it all finished, some things happened, it was hard to get it all done, but, um, we were close and we hit the mark very closely, so, um, as of right now, um, everything is done except some general cleanup um, for now, and that we'll continue that painting project and signage as we go throughout the year.
I noticed the red in always really pops now in the, the new, the black and white pictures with the red that is, uh, highlighted is in the, uh, what was the old athletic office, those renovations, not been through those, those areas.
Yeah, so we're pushing it to work at, um, throughout this year, and even maybe throughout the summers, we can to keep it going, and bring that back up to what it should be.
It also helps that, uh, our lead director does, does a thing for art.
It does, and I, that, that graphic design piece is kind of nice, so, yes.
There's a RHS grab that's actually helping us with some of the pictures, I believe.
And CryneX is helping us with the, the production, so that's nice too, um, they do a lot for us, and so it's been, um, kind of fun to work with them on this, because it's different for them as well, so it's good.
A little plug in also for the January twentieth alumni night.
Oh, sure, absolutely, so, um, I believe they reached out to the end members and double up members and all, um, basketball players and just alumni in general, so, yeah, just trying to come back to Ternan Center and enjoy a night.
But quite proud, we're.
Yeah.
The non-alumni attend also.
Well, you're, you're on.
Just wanna make sure the public knew everyone was here.
Yeah, absolutely, it's, uh, it's open to everyone, just the, the special outreach to, kind of bring some alumni back, that maybe haven't been in the buildings in the past three, four years, so.
Fill the stands, right?
That's right.
There are three former cheerleaders on the board. Probably can't guess who the third one is, Mr. President?
All right. It wasn't me this time. Next up is, um, policy review.
President Walton Trustees, I come before you all to ask Jamie Bolzer join the conversation. Policy review updates, item six point zero one, this is Bolzer.
I'm actually going to, I have two people here, and I'm gonna actually make a lot of work into some of these things, so I'm gonna let, so I'm gonna defer to Mr. Mops and Alice Johnson, if you guys don't mind coming to join us, um, but in front of you is just the first batch of, of this implementation process, I'm gonna let them take off.
Again, hopefully you all remember and know, Mr. Stacy Mops, I'm sorry, you know, these were, yeah, you had to leave yourself.
Yeah.
Here's my name tag to get sued for that.
And David Johnson as well comes to us, um, I really got it.
So presented for you were, um, some, quite a few, I don't know exactly how many, and, um, Ms. Johnson, I'll let you, uh, Dr. Johnson, I'll let you discuss, uh, there are two different batches within that batch one. Uh, one are templates and one are boilerplate.
Okay, so I'll just start off and introduce myself for those of you who don't know me. Um, I'm Alice Johnson, I live in Williamsburg, I'm married to Dr. Johnson, I'm a chiropractor. Um, I have a long history in education, I was superintendent for eight years, and I'm currently the, uh, program director for the PhD and master's level educational leadership studies programs at Purdue University in West Lafayette. However, I do most of my work from right here in Wayne County. Um, but I also assist Neola with, um, some of their policy updates and making a connection between the legal side of policy and the administration and school board practical side, how policies actually live out in real life in schools. So, um, that's my role in, uh, with Neola, and that's what brings me here this evening, um, to, you know, kind of help. So Jamie, um, reached out to Neola, uh, some time back, uh, about Richmond switching back to Neola. I believe one time, I know when Dr. Borat was here, uh, you were with, uh, Neola Policies. Neola Policies are very comprehensive, they are vetted for federal law, state law, um, the, any rules and regulations of the Department of Education, the BFGF, um, you know, getting public counselor opinions, so it's the whole gamut, so the policies that you may have had before with ISBA, there, they don't give you updates. They send you information, um, then somebody in-house, uh, just makes some updates to your policies, and I think that's what you had been doing recently. Shifting back to Neola, much of your language was already Neola language. So what you're seeing in two different batches, and I worked on a lot of these, and Stacy has reviewed them as well, and as well as Jamie, um, where it says boilerplate, that packet is simply, there's not a lot of choices. It's Neola's standard boilerplate language that they recommend, that covers all of the laws and regulations that I mentioned before. Um, some of them are identical to what you, the policies that you currently have. Some have been updated with, uh, more up-to-date language, more culturally responsive language perhaps, um, over the years that you've not been with Neola. But the boilerplate is simply boilerplate, very few options, I added in Richmond Community Schools, or, you know, your legal, legal, uh, information. And then on the minimal options, those that I originally edited for you, I took from your policies and made all of the same choices that you currently had in your policy. So it should, it should look the same when it's finally published, when all of the other options that you, you know, could choose that didn't are gone.
And you can see those options, um, the options that were selected that match, that mirror our language are highlighted in green, and the options that don't mirror our language are crossed out and highlighted in, in red. Um, and going along with something she said, simply clicking on one tab, you can see all of the changes that, um, that Neol suggests due to the, to the, um, legislative session that, that concluded. that um that Neola suggests due to the to the um legislative session that that concluded back last summer. So it's easy to see those and to see those changes and to bring those up and to make those changes. Very simple.
What we felt um would probably be best because there are so many policies, obviously, as we we understand. So what we're trying to do is batch them and segment them into, you know, the first reading, the introductory glands at them so that there's time for everyone to absorb um absorb them and then obviously the second reading for the adoption. And then um then to have the next batch come before you.
And your next batch is not gonna be this big.
No.
Um it's gonna be much smaller.
I got a little happy.
Well, and the next batch, so we've done the easy ones and the next ones, um there's a little more work to do to match them up totally.
I'd like to make a motion that we table this process um until the board can be involved. This is a board function. It's not an administrative function. And I think to have Mrs. Bowles or Mr. Mops leading the charge, I think is unacceptable and inappropriate. Uh policy by the state is dictated by the board. And so my move is that we table this indefinitely so the board can have input. If I can get a second, probably not, but there's my motion.
I guess I'm not gonna second that. Sorry, John. I didn't say why I won't second that is I feel like this is our input. These are boilerplates. I looked through them. There aren't changes. There are minimal wording changes on these. We aren't approving them tonight. This is our chance to dig in deeper if we want, I mean, if we need to and discuss and figure out. Um this is just the first reading. Um so to me, we're not creating new policy here. We are.
But we are.
We're simply, I mean, many of these, most of these.
Oh, one, two, three. Philosophy of the Board is a policy we don't currently have. That's a new policy.
Well, first reading, so I think that's what we're here to discuss. This is our time.
And we're supposed to do that. We got these, what, Friday night, was it? Four days in?
And then we have a whole nother two weeks um between now and the twenty fourth.
We're supposed to do a hundred and what, fourteen pages of policies? Have meaningful discussion every night?
It's adequate time.
I mean, I I, this is the one, the board is charged with three things. Creating policy, being the financial responsibility of the the corporation, and hiring the superintendent. This is one of the the pillars that we are charged to do and we have allowed administration to take the lead on this. This is how we did the major policy review last time. I, I think this is skirting our ability, our our authorities, our responsibilities. It's just wrong. It's not administrative, administrative job is to implement policy. They have their own guidelines that they develop, they compose. Our job is to create the policies, to develop policies with their input. And we've had no input, zero. And just looking, just in the first ten pages, there's, you know, communications policies that have significant changes to what we currently have. I mean, it it's subtle, but you know, there's a and we just don't have enough time to go through these one by one in seven weeks to go cover all our policies.
So am I correct in thinking if there are some um individual policies such as this, this communication one you're referencing, that we would be able to pull those out individually, say, you know what, we do want to table this particular policy? We want to, you know, um we can cherry pick, so to speak.
Well, if we had like ten a week to look at, not a hundred and fourteen in four days. I mean, I didn't read them. I skimmed them, but I did not read them all because I cannot go through and spend that much time to try to have, and then knowing that the rest of you are just fine, do whatever you want. I mean, it it doesn't, it, the last time the board split up into pairs, we did by section and I thought we had a really good result. This is board work. And if we don't want to do it, I guess we tell administration to do it. But I want to do my job. I want to do the board's. I just, I mean, even on poli, I mean, there's just example after example in just the first few pages. They they struck out on policy oh one three two point two, administrator superintendent shouts himself the board with regard to development and or revision of policies. Struck out. That's not his role. If if he's not gonna consult the board, whose job is to create policy, we got bigger problems. And so, I mean, there's just tons of examples and I I I know Mrs. Johnson did a terrific job going through it all, but this is a year-long process and it should be with board members, not with administrators, no offense administration. But, you know, it's uh just, just not happening at all, obviously. I mean, ISBA has policy advisory. I friends this app. Talks about the role of board members in creating policy. That was just dated when or tw- two years ago, three years ago, I guess. So, I mean, I, there's no second. We're gonna go forward. So I said my piece. You guys do what you want.
I mean, I can't say, just, you know, being new on the board, I think some are really detailed and well thought out. And then there are some um, you know, that don't really have much behind it. So I would want to see, which is probably kind of alluding a little bit to what you're talking about, like, you know, student recognition. It's kind of a basic statement, but like, what is that? I know there was one with um uh independent study and it was, you know, we tasked the superintendent for creating a policy. So it's sort of like, okay, well, what's that policy that needs to be referenced in this? If we're looking at overall policy or if you have a separate policy or if RHS has a separate one, that it's referenced in this policy? Do you know what I mean? It's because it's like, there's a lot that says at the superintendent's discretion or your task. But are we going through this and saying, hey, do you have this? Do you have this? Do you have this? Right? You might not. I mean, I know you go through them. But there's been like no accountability on that. So I, for me, it's like just adding more detail. And if we want to have a policy, you know, we can't just say we want to recognize students. It's sort of, you know, the superintendent with the, you know, building principal, it's gotta have more detail. Um that's just kind of my feedback on some of this, which I know, like, you know, what you wanting to dig in. Um because, yeah, some are super detailed and that's great, but then some are basic and it's not really a policy. It's just a statement. So.
If I can interject just to add to what you're saying, um many of them will reference that you're giving the superintendent the authority to develop or you're requiring the superintendent to develop what's called administrative guidelines. They're not separate policies. That is, the administrative guidelines are just the details of how the superintendent will operationalize that policy. So it does add more and most of the time those are referenced within the policy, like C, A G.
Yes.
Whatever number.
Okay.
And then Neola offers templates for those administrative guidelines, you know, to help assist the superintendent making, making choices that match up with the decisions in the policy.
Now, Johnson, if I may add, just for clarification, just to get an as, this pickering reference, now this is also my first time with such an experience. So I I don't know, but I'm curious to know to Mr. Weber's questions and to his point. Uh in the other corporations in which you have also served and assisted, now when such questions have come up or such concerns have come up, I'm curious to know how they may have addressed such concerns or how they move forward.
I can tell you my experience with the twenty-one schools that I communicate with.
Yes, ma'am.
Um there's only one school, um Warren Township, um where one of the board members sits in on the meeting, on each update meeting. They've been Neola, with Neola for a long time. And one board member does attend the update meeting with me as I go through and explain, you know, what the changes have been based on the legislative update or a new public access, you know, ruling or so forth. Uh but that is the only school that the school board itself is involved in the actual drafting of the Neola policies because the Neola policies are already vetted by so many attorneys. I'm not an attorney. I think I made that clear. Um but they are, they are written and vetted through federal attorneys, you know, state attorneys that represent education. So uh they're, they're very thorough from that. Now, let me take my Neola hat off and put my professor hat on. And my experience, a long time dealing in policy. With all due respect, I've never had a situation, never known of a board where they completely deal with the policies without the administration making those recommendations. And the reason for that, that I've been told in most cases is because most board members are not experts in education, law and policy and they would like to have the recommendation of the superintendent. Yeah, that's their stance. Um so, but I am.
I think ideally you would see a partnership. I mean.
Yes.
And so.
And it works.
Together, but that's not happening here.
I will say, if you have too many people at the table, it gets, it gets really, really complicated. Um but what they do at Warren Township works very well. Um the one board member is very well-versed and uh policy enjoys that kind of work and it's just like another appointment, just as you appointed for various um, you know.
Well, one time we discussed doing that. I know, John, you were interested and Kristen, you were interested in possibly doing that. So is that something we'd be in favor of? I mean, John, are you interested?
Well, I don't know how you review a hundred policies and have any meaningful discussion and kind of, I mean, I, it just, I don't think, I don't see how that works. I mean, I think it's a year-long process. You start, you move and and uh, you know, we were suppo, we were supposed to have it in August and it got delayed, which I'm fine with. But I, you know, we have existing policies. We've just approved one that I think they're fairly good. Um and I think there's a better way to incorporate the two. I don't know what that is. But I think this should be board-led and yes, administration should be involved, but it should be board-led, not administrative-led. This is policy work, not administrative work. They can write all the administrative guidelines you need to do the job, but policy is board work. Now, if we lean on administrators, so be it, but it uh to move at at your pace. Nope. I I think we need to back up and talk about why we're getting a batch of policies such as this. So let's rewind in like spring, summer of last year. The decision was made move toward Neola. And now we're looking at the first set of policies. So we're in line with what Neola's language is. So we're, we're using their language. This first batch, as is highlighted on each of the policies, references the Indiana Code. And these are, this is a set of policies that basically reaffirms we're following Indiana Code. And this, because we're approving this first batch, which is essentially reaffirming Indiana Code. There's a couple outliers in there, but minor. It's, it's getting us in line with Neola language. And then, as there's policies that we want to review, this, just because we're approving these in these batches, doesn't mean we're not open to reviewing those on an individual or group basis in the future. But we've got to start getting to the Neola language. And that's what I see this is as doing, and especially this first batch. I mean, it's a big bunch, but it is just getting us reaff- reaffirming the Indiana Code and federal code and work bases that are in line. So, so policy of the board. I mean, maybe that's a good idea to have a policy. Maybe the state, there's no state requirement. So I'm just gonna go with what Neola says. I mean, I think the board should have a discussion of what our philosophy is. I don't think we just pull it out of a binder somewhere. It's ridiculous. Is it bad? No. Does it say anything horrible? No. But but are we just gonna approve it? I mean, I don't even know how many people at the table even read it. I mean. I think this is our.
Can I just, just offer one bit of information? And it's simply that when, when we were with not Neola before and then when we transitioned to the current policies that we have, there were templates for each of those. So Neola had their templates. And then ISBA did a review of our policies and formulated any change within their template, at which point you determined that approval for second reading, all of that. So these have always been templated. I just, I just wanted to just kind of offer that. And it is very routine that policies are templates and then small adjustments are made based on each corporation. So I'm assuming that that is what these Neola policies are, are the normal templates that we have utilized pretty much word for word or all bracketed choices that we had or um changes. I sat on policy review when we were with Neola before. That it was exactly that, what you're looking at now were templates that came to the board and were approved. And you moved to the next one. Um so this is not uncommon. This is very, very normal practice. And so I just, it it's here or there, but just so that, because every, well, most people accept number Stevens and number what are are fairly, they weren't here, you guys weren't here when we had Neola before. And so they were always templated before when we went to ISBA, they were templates. So I I just didn't want to offer that because it might help just with understanding maybe.
And finally, I um with respect to the current policies going away from Neola. Um obviously, we're going back to Neola. The current policies, let's take the philosophy of the board. That is separated out into its own policy. However, you already have that wording in a policy. It's just in a range. So it's policy um oh one zero, oh one two zero through oh one two three. So it's just bracketed together in your current policy where this is separating them out. And the reason for that, for board docs purposes, is when we often need to search policy and find it, it's very difficult. You can't search embedded by only the attachment. So by having them individualized and sectioned out on their own, administratively, we can go in and do a search on our policy or under board docs and it takes us right to the specific language that we need. Um or otherwise, we're spending hours, kind of hours just finding that certain policies. So Mr. Mops uh can attest to, he had to do that yesterday, I think it was, and spent several hours of his time trying to find an embedded policy where this is just separating what we already have in many cases. The other reason to Mr. Zaleski's point is um trying to batch them out and trying to say that with the boil boiler points, uh boilerplates, um there weren't options from those that were vetted by Neola. Um those are copyrighted, I do believe also, or that, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Johnson. Um so those were boilerplates, were standard language for all the schools that use Neola. However, with this being first reading to um number Stole's point, if there is something that requires additional look, we can certainly do that. And as we look to um Mr. Mops and I were talking this this afternoon, that as we look to move this process down, there's going to be, to remember Weber's point, ones that we may not feel comfortable at all recommending without additional input. Whether it be, hey, this is something that really is even outside our scope. We need to take it to cabinet. We need Dr. Wright. Or then even say, hey, we need to bring a board member in or however we want to handle that, um such as what Warren does. But I I did, the reason these were fast and segmented, the way they were, was just to begin moving that ball down the road a little bit, as far as these were just mainly boilerplate plates or very minimal changes. That's all I have.
So with as difficult as it is for an administrator to find the policy they're looking for, with as difficult as it is for the administrator to find a policy, imagine, I know that you want to be transparent. Imagine how difficult it is for a patron or a parent to find a policy that they're looking for. So by separating them out, it does help with transparency as, as, you know, people in the public are able to go right to a policy that they're looking for.
Now, John, to your point.
Now, John, to your point, I was relatively new on the fourth, we did all that policy reviews. I remember those were the first things we did, and it was, it was a calling task. But when we went from Neola to ISBA and their set of policies and Karen and Rodman and Sharon, maybe able to answer this. They, they weren't developed each one by the board members, they were given out in a big dump. And then that's when we did the reviews, just went through and did that.
Yeah.
So it's, this isn't that different from when it was done to go to ISBA's. Did the work on the back end of it, or reviewed and tweaked and did anything like that. Is that correct, Aaron?
One of the differences between doing it this way and what we did with ISBA, we didn't have, we didn't have such a large number that was presented to us at once. You know, two different, two different segments that were presented. We may have five, six, seven, eight, you know, at a time that were given to us that gave us a little bit of ample time to sit and discuss, you know, to tweak them, to compare them against the policies that we previously had with Neola. Compare them to those. And so we, we didn't have such a large amount of them at this time. I, I, I can say for myself that if this does move forward to a second reading, you know, meantime, I, I know of at least five that I'll be presenting questions to the board, of my concerns for them. Mr. Mopps, and to the administration that I think that we, you know, I personally have a lot of questions in regards to them. It's no different than the way that we had done it, or I had done it in the past, except, you know, not working in silos or efforts. We just didn't have as many presented to us at once.
Ronnie.
I think, Aaron, you and I can have the perspective to know where we've been in this process. I confess that I do have a bias that favors the ISBA policy support group. But I think what we're talking about here is, is the process and it needs a starting point. I don't know what our policies are now. I know somewhere along the line, a very, I thought, appropriate policy that this board passed that's unique to Richmond, Indiana, a bi-local policy that was passed, I get, I, I challenge anybody to find it in the policy manual. How that dropped out, I don't know. So echoing John's point, it's not the administration's fault that it dropped out. The board, one board felt that was the policy they wanted to abide by, and originally as written was for all contracts, including public works contracts. The statute was later amended to apply, to take the public works contracts out of it. That's pretty, they can be pretty big-ticket items, and the step, and the percentage variations allow it for the non-lowest bidder to be accepted with big dollars. But you still have it, the availability of bi-local or your, everything, you know, your supplies, which is tangible, personal property. That's just an example. John, I, I looked real, or Stacy, I looked real quickly. Ninety-one thirty's not in this, is it?
No.
Okay.
No, and, and that's, and that's one that needs a lot of work, so we didn't.
That, that one is going to be unique to Richmond, Indiana. It may be similar to some elsewhere else, but it better be unique to Richmond, Indiana, because it's you folks, they're on the line with that one, because it has criminal penalties if you fail to, if, if, if a grand jury finds that you allowed materials that is either, that are either obscene or harmful to minors, to be disseminated. I don't think a librarian's gonna put, be put in jail. I think it's gonna be you folks who are responsible for it. I don't think anybody's gonna be put in jail, frankly. I think, but that's, that's the mindset of the legislature that passed, passed and rolled Act fourteen forty-seven last session. We're dealing with extremism and a lot of political environments. I think it's important that we not let that extremism get overly reflected in our policies. However you do that, but that involves horror.
So that, that's why that one isn't a hundred policies. That's because that, that's gonna take some work.
And there again, there are a couple that are presented in this that may have correlation, or at least some type of spin-off with that exactly. That's why I said, if this passes, you know, moves to second reading, there are a couple in it, in particular, that I am going to be asked a serious questions about.
Well, I, I would, I guess the question that, that begs is, when is second reading planned? I, I, I agree with you, I think you gotta do the process, but I think the board needs to be comfortable, they have enough time between now and wherever that's planned, to do the job the board does need to do.
Yeah. It's a very valid point. For me personally, for Miss, me personally, if it, if this, if this moves on second reading.
A lot of, a lot of material to get through.
So, if I can give you a recommendation from my professor's side, my recommendation would be that you don't necessarily look at a second reading as, okay, it's all or nothing. That you've been presented with a first reading, you will have a second reading, and you may hit and chew, you know, cherry pick, as has been said, but have a disposition sheet, of which I'll show you what that is, a disposition sheet. Those that you're ready to approve, you can go ahead and approve those. Those that you want to table, you'll just check mark table, and there'll be additional work. Maybe a board member works with Stacy or Jamie or, you know, whomever, and you, you know, resolve those, and then you have an additional reading on the revised ones, and then approve those. And that way you're not holding everything up. You know, I apologize, there's so many, I just kept working. You know, I just, I just kept adding to the batch, so.
Well, to, and to John's point, that it does, it, those, it took some time for us to vet them through as well, and we wanted to try to streamline it for you and be as efficient as we could, and, and respect your gracious time as well. But we, we are open to, there, there's no perfect solution or a one-way is the only way. So we're certainly open to the impact, or from the input and the voice of the board collectively as to what it would like to do in moving forward. But to Dr. Johnson's point, you know, don't look at the second reading as, and if there are some that you're uncomfortable with, we certainly want the board to have comfort, and you can certainly pull those back as we bring others to first reading. Do you want to bring, you know, pull and give those back? But we are, you know, as, as we move through this with the next batch, like Stacy, Mopps and I were talking this afternoon, we didn't feel comfortable making recommendations on some of them that were new, that were from several legislative sessions ago, that we're still not up to speed on. So there is, you know, we do need to move the work because we are behind. And if you look, there was how many from just last legislative session, and now they're in session again. So I think it's important to move the work, but we want to do it at the board's comfort level and pace, so don't. We're, we're open to amending the process to, to put the board.
I think I apologize, I think you were in the middle of making sure that they, they move with it. Because.
I, I think the checklist, I'm sorry, I'm glad you're.
Not to stand by what I said, you know, again, I'll be bringing up some, some concerns with at least three of them pertaining to what, what is presented tonight, relative to, you know, that, so.
I think a checklist makes a lot of sense. But, because if you look at like policy thirty-one, twelve, board staff communications, it's vastly different. Vastly different. Here, our old policy talks about pertinent matters or official matters. The new policy says all communication. The old pol, the new policy also talks about unethical conduct. I mean, these are words that aren't used in our existing conduct policy. And I think to make those changes, I mean, if that's what the boards will, that's the boards will. But to have non-board members making those changes, I mean, and you have to read all this stuff and almost compare policy to policy to, to understand what these changes are. And, I mean, I think board staff communication is a very, I mean, it's taken us a long place to get where we're at, and now all communications now? Even if it's, hey, how you doing? What's going on? Kid was great, you know, in the concert today? And then to be considered, if I violate some things that I'm now considered unethical? I don't think so, and I'm not gonna vote for that to be in policy, that's for sure. So, so that's, that's where the board review needs to come in place. I mean, yeah, are the policies basically the same and basically all right? Yeah, but there's some tweaks that need done before this gets two votes of approval. So, you know, if we can pull out, you know, if we can vote on eighty percent of them, that's fine. I mean, maybe that's a good way to go forward, but I, I just, I think, I mean, board member eyes, and I trust my other six board members, if Pete says, I'll, I'll take that policy and I'll give you my thoughts. I can, I can trust my other board members to, to have good input, if I can't look at every single one myself, but, but just the bottom beam is just.
So we don't have a list of like what has changed or? Like I know that, you know, things are highlighted in the new, in the batch, but we don't know without looking.
Now, let me just be clear that what's highlighted is, is based on Neola's template.
Right.
Not your whole policy.
Right. See, that's hard too, but I, I'm, so I'm glad you said that, because as a new board member, I'm like, you know, yeah, I've, I've read through the old ones, but then it's hard to really go back and forth. You just get a little lost, like, was that not a correct policy? Are we just updating language? Are we having a different thought process?
For the most, for the most part, your numbers are pretty similar. Now, there's, it's not completely, for the most part, the numbers align pretty well.
The only, yeah, the only difference is they, and I explained it in the email to you, is they've separated that certified, classified. So there are duplicates, like forty-one, twenty-one might be the same as thirty-one, twenty-one, because one is for certified staff, one is for classified staff, and that's to help the H R department. But they, but they wording is almost exactly the same.
Okay.
Well, I personally appreciate having a starting point. Yeah, we need to slow down the timeline.
If you want, I can make a list and have a couple columns. I'll list every policy that we've given you. I'll title it out and then have columns, whether you want to question it or you try to approve it.
Let me see, I'm, I'm gonna have one in corporal punishment. Fifty-six, thirty. It defines corporal punishment appropriately, then it says corporal punishment shall not be used by the board's employees. Well, if not by the board's employees, who's gonna do it? The board ain't gonna do it themselves. I don't understand that. I mean, there, I think there's just a need for a careful reading between first and second. And changes made to those, the required changes before the second reading, that whether, but I, I understand the dilemma with where we apparently are, and they haven't been looked at in a while. We need to get, need to get them in place, and so if, like you said, if we look at them, and you can do seventy-five percent without any bombs, that's fine, but I, I've looked at three or four, and I have questions too.
Yeah.
I think, I think my shock initially was just thinking second meeting, reading was gonna be at the next meeting. And so the fact that we can push that out makes me feel a little bit better. I love the idea about having the checklist of yes, no, needs modification, let's do that, and it makes me feel a lot, lot easier with it. I, I do share some of John's points about it being board work, but you know, policies are basically recommended to the board from the superintendent, and then we discuss it and approve those and tweak them. So this is an extension of that, but.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, it's just, it, it's a lot. It, it is a lot on the first note, and just, there are definitely big questions on some of them.
There are times that as a board, we are tasked with creating a new policy that we don't have because of new issues that arise out there in public education or out, you know, in the real world. And then we, as a board, we sit down in public and we discuss, you know, discuss the matter, and we come up with what that policy is going to look like. We, as a board, tweak that, and then we put it, you know, through secretary or something, put it into writing, and we as a board, you know, forward that to the administration superintendent, who, through administration, and also with legal counsel, then presents the recommendation to us, and that's helping create that new policy. And that, that, that's where the biggest portion of our, of ours, our work comes with when it comes to creation of a new policy. And I don't ever want to get away from our board work, going to John's point, in, in what our role is, and approving existing policies, creating policies, or moving the, new, moving policies forward. Like I said, this was a big dump, you know, hu, a huge thing. I like the idea of a checklist, because I have a lot of questions and everything else. I'm even more appreciative of the fact that it's not something that we're gonna be voting on. You know, if it moves to second reading, it's not gonna be something that we're gonna be voting on in two weeks.
And just to piggyback on what Members Stevens, I've mentioned, also, the war, President Warren, as well as Members Zaleski referred to, the historiography as to how we arrived here. I know that within the field as administration, we have policies that are contemporary, up-to-date, and, you know, supported by those federal, state legal experts. It allows us to truly have confidence and dignity to press forward with our work, that we found to, policies being outdated is that it's needless in, in respects.
And I, I agree with that, Dr. Wright, and you've said that numerous times. Our administration has never brought a policy to the board for update. Once we stopped the policy review process, we haven't looked at a policy since, other than the, the public commentary policy a couple. And so, so you say that, but you know, I, I, you've never brought a policy forward. I mean, that's kind of administration's role, is to let the board know, hey, policy X, Y, Z needs updated. All right, thank you, let's do it. And then we do our thing on your recommendation, and we, we have a policy manager that works for the corporation. I, I just, I mean, I've heard that, and like I say, you've mentioned it so many times, and I, I, I believe you, but I would have, it'd been nice if we had several policies that we've been updating along the way, rather than just hearing, we have policies that are outdated.
Isn't that what he's doing now, though? He's bringing Neola and all of these and saying, hey, board, we need to read them, and you guys look at them and discuss.
He's bringing all of them.
Well, he's bringing the boiler plate. There's a lot of them, we all agree. But I do feel like it's, he's doing what he's supposed to be, exactly what he just says is what he's doing. He's not saying, I've done them, here they are, approve them. He's saying, here they are, we need to update them, I'm doing it. And you guys look at them, and now we can, Stacy and, you know, and however we decide to divide that out in a sufficient amount of time. It is a lot, we are a lot.
It's a lot of detail.
I think we're doing the process.
Yeah, and I mean, I think there's space for the administration to come and say, we don't need this. We know, like, we don't see this, or here's an issue that we see, like, this is contradictory, like, you know, let's make a policy for the policy, make policies. Because I think that's important, because I think there's a lot here too that we have, and I'm like, why do we have that? It just seems like it's probably just carried over for years and years and years. And maybe you guys see things that you're like, this never comes up, or, hey, this comes up all the time, we, we really need to dig in, or. So I would like to see that too. And, and whatever that is, it doesn't mean like every week they send us things, but just a timeline of an annual review.
We set up a policy years ago of how to look at policy, it was supposed to go to exec board. It never got in policy, I can't remember. The policy was to go to the exec board to see if it needed to be reviewed and then brought to the main.
For a while, we were getting, you know, several policies at the exec board level. Just glance at, hey, you know, red flag on us, we got some of these we looked at, so we can bring it to the board. And with the we turn over to the administration, there's, I guess, you kind of. That would be a bad.
Exactly, because of, I think what we need is just that consensus of what is board's desire so that we can keep moving the work forward, because I think we just need direction from the board, because we're saying there are many that need to be uploaded, uh, uploaded, we're, we're with. many that need to be uploaded, uh, uploaded. We're, we're with Neola. We made that decision months ago. So if it's a step first to see to the executive board where they get the pre-first reading almost, and then if they're, you know, hey, we, we like this choice better and then they can bet it through or, um, but I'm hearing that the board's not comfortable with the second reading being the twenty-fourth, or they possibly are. Um, but you'll possibly pull out some, so if we could just have just some, oh, direction, you know, whether it's the executive board um, or stop shop there or, um, what the preference is.
I think this has helped me clarify what I want to like dig back in and look at. I don't know. Because like, you know, I've read through them all, but it just helps me sort of know, like, hey, yeah, a lot of it is exactly what we have. And then, you know, whether we have conversation about or we mark on the spreadsheet and then talk about that on the twenty-fourth, or hey, bring all your issues on the twenty-fourth and we talk about it. Maybe that's not second reading, but that's.
Second reading doesn't automatically mean approval.
Yeah.
Um, you could create a sheet that has, you know, policy number, policy name, first reading, second reading, third reading, fourth reading, fifth reading, however many readings you want to have because there may be one that ends up at a fifth reading, uh, because you don't want to spend every board meeting arguing over one policy for three hours, you know, table it, maybe the executive committee can, you know, work with the administration. You know, however you, you decide you want your process to be. But I would keep the process moving would be my recommendation, um, with some sort of spreadsheet, first reading, second reading, third. You know, when it's finally, once those are finally approved, those move to another disposition sheet for publication. They go to Neola, they're official, they've been approved by the board and those get published on board docs so that they're visible for your public.
And to Mrs. Bolzer's point, Mr. Weber brings up a strong point that seems.
Thanks.
Here, regarding our recommendations or, uh, it seems there.
I'm just happy to be getting the direction from our board and so we always like to proceed.
No, I don't.
Doesn't have anything they've got.
You've been in this role. A lot of conversation as to how this will go out. Well, I know our administrative team is all for suggestions. We just simply need to know.
I don't know that they do that.
Exactly. The past year. Going back to the same. Update, no, we're going to be changing everything too. So, uh, there's a little bit of sway there. I would, I would.
In our existing policies.
And correct if I'm wrong, guys. If you guys have some changes you want to see. Um, you know, they hear how we have different set of circumstances in our corporation. We got, hey, we need to address this. They went out there for the exec committee with them, say, yeah, we do or no. And, you know, and we'll, we'll talk to that at the first, get this thing rolling. Get it out there. So, there's that. Got a role in the exec committee is to
Right.
Filter.
Question until we get some more resolution, I would, I'd ask. If I want to know where, what a existing policy is, can I rely upon going to board docs, clicking on the policy? And then that, that is what you just approved tonight and you approved all existing policy and procedures. That is what we have, we're operating under now pending, pending this process working itself through. So we're not without policy.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So regarding this process, um, I mean, are people liking the idea, well, just say what I, I, I like the idea of, okay, obviously this is first reading. We have a second reading on the twenty-fourth. We have a third reading. I like that Dr. Johnson's like, okay, however many times it takes that we, until we're ready to vote on it, but I would like to keep this on a timeline. Um, just, you know, by personal preference. And then, um, I personally have just been earmarking. In fact, John, you mentioned, uh, one that I had earmarked and I was like, okay, so obviously John and I are on the same page on that one. We want to talk about that. We want to see what the deal is to kind of dig into that one. So I know John and I are on the same page. High five, John. So anyway, I just feel like personally, I would rather have all seven of us looking at all of them rather than just the exec. You know, um, and then we could kind of compare notes. And then if something needs to be dug into a little deeper, then we could task either the exec or team or if we want to have like a policy suspension or whatever, then do it that way.
Yeah, I was kind of thinking like, yeah, all of us for this and then, but I do like the exec, if you guys, something comes up and you're like, hey, this is an issue.
Let us know.
After kind of we roll this out.
I think the library is a very good example.
Yes, yes, because we're gonna want to look at that.
Yes.
Is, is there potential to take the first set of boilerplates and move that forward? Because really there is minimal in that. Still, as, I mean, those are just foundational policies there. Because we don't have to take all three sets, all of it.
Or we took them all to second readings. We can take more to third reading or fourth reading.
And you could approve some of them except for, I mean, that's possible. You could approve one. But angry.
We get to decide on our pace.
Yeah.
But we're doing the marathon. Okay? So.
We just wanted to start the race.
Yes, let's just start that race. Yeah, what kind of, is, so you're, are you suggesting maybe just do the first?
The batch one.
Batch one, that's what a hundred and eighteen page.
Right.
Document. There you go. Which one's that, Pete?
It's, has first policy, uh, titled name, the governing body of this corporation shall be officially known as.
And goes through the last policy of nine, six hundred? Is that where your stuff is? With staffs.
Forty-four, four, forty-four job, job related.
This is just for clarity. Are we, was the suggestion to all three minute batches to second reading than any other batches that he needs to.
I was, I was just asking.
We've not had an motion on that at all. So
Right, I've not.
The only motion on the table right now was for Timmer Weber to table this, the board was more involved. And that's still the conversation here to, uh, very valid conversation. Um, so I, I would say move it all through here to get it to where we can really get to the nuts and bolts of it with the spreadsheets and checklists, so.
Well, my understanding, well, you're the attorney, but my understanding of laws, the first reading is where you actually have taken custody of
Right.
those documents. So what you, if you decide from this point, you know, until you, until you do a first reading, my understanding is that legally you haven't accepted those documents. But your attorney can clarify that.
Our policy is we have two readings, first, second. Then if approved on second, that's been, historically, that's been adoption. So what happens between first and second can involve substantive changes. You know, based on input, based upon analysis. And there's absolutely no reason why, as Dr. Johnson noted, you, you can't even modify that for your own policy, but you need a third reading on, on a given policy or whatever. I don't think you want to go to three and four readings. As a general course, I think you'll be able to find, once you get into it, the vast majority of these are well-written or they're accurate. And you'll be able to move them through in two readings, but there are some that you're going to need, you're definitely going to need input. Both from the administration, legal input perhaps, and certainly from the board, from a policy perspective.
So can I make a motion that we move all three of these or approve the first reading of all three? And that next.
I thought there was one table that they ever let that die for a second.
And to have a discussion about batch one boilerplates, a hundred and eighteen page document that Pete is referencing.
I bet you a motion table needs a second.
A lot, I don't know, maybe a simple approving all of this one eighteen, but there's probably something that we're going to want to discuss. We have discussion.
Oh, I would say, I would make a motion to move.
Your president.
But I know I'm not making.
Oh, I'm just, I would say.
I was just suggesting, I was suggesting a motion to.
We have to acknowledge Mr. Weber's motion to take.
It has not been said as yet, so. I'll just wave my hand. Yeah, you guys roll.
So I'm making a motion to approve the first reading and send. What I'm doing is what, I want to make a motion to approve the first reading and I guess, yeah, and send for second reading. The batch is presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made to approve the first reading and send the second reading, the batch as presented.
Uh, my only question, Ron, it has been historical practice that the second reading is public commentary and public input on those documents.
Well, whether it is or not, that, that I think is final action. This is procedural. I think when I gave it, I gave you an advisement letter when the public law eighty-four was passed requiring public commentary before final action. I think definitely you'd have to have public commentary before final adoption of your ordinance. I don't, I see this as more procedural, taking different phase statuses, first reading to second, which will be adoption. So, yeah, I think you definitely have to have public commentary.
I understand that. I just want to make sure the, the public understands we're going to discuss these at the next meeting or we're going to open the floor. I, I guess the floor is always open for the meeting, so I, I guess it really doesn't matter.
There'd be opportunity for public comment. I think when you take final action on them, they should at least be an action, they should be an agenda item.
All right, so get a motion.
Yes.
Yeah.
One comments. Okay. Uh, so first of all, so it sounds like you're going to be putting a chart together.
I'll get that to you.
Are we good with having that? Does that, is that?
Like it'd be very helpful.
I, I think it would.
Tuesday, is that right? I get to you by Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah, no. Um, and thank you for your patience and.
Block tonight.
Yeah. In working through this.
Actually, I've worked through and I've got a document where I, I did exactly, I have one on one screen, one on another screen, and I read through them every one that you have and and then I made, you know, subtle changes or word changes, you know, I, I tried to match those up with the system pain, so it shouldn't be, it should be.
Just for clarification, Don made a motion, you know, to table this, all right, and did not, you know, it didn't say. If this is approved to move to second reading, just to keep in mind that we're still uncertain when it comes back to us again at second reading, there again, a motion can be made to table the second reading. To move it out for further discussion and clarification and answer questions. So just because if it does move to second reading on that night when we're having a discussion for approval on second reading, we do not have to do so. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you for this.
And is it correct that our board wants to look at that first batch? That's what we're all digging into when we're at the next meeting?
That's, that's what you say. I mean, obviously get, get into it as much as you can, but that would be definitely the goal.
Do you want us to hold on bringing any other first readings?
Yes.
Except with maybe one, if there is a one, first one because of timing or something, we maybe bring it, but just not a.
I mean, we won't post them and have them, so if we have time, we can look at them? Are you saying we won't post them?
Well, let's, let's do that. If the board's comfortable, we'll post them in that batch two, but just not bring them officially for first reading, the twenty-fourth.
So you can start looking through batch two.
I saw it off there.
T W O, you can start looking through those.
Okay. It's like, when I have time, I need.
That's a great point. So we'll go ahead and have them in batch two and board doc so that you guys can see them. But we just won't bring them for first reading until we kind of move these down.
And we won't bring you a hundred and eighteen page.
No, this is the big.
Unless you wait until next year that you want some.
Yeah.
One last thing to add, not just. President and Vice President were having a side comment over here a month ago, which leads me to ask the question. What is the actual motion on the floor that we are voting?
My motion.
The motion on the floor is to approve the first reading and send to second reading the batches as presented. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, opposed in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye.
Next.
Okay, um, vote passes six to one. And number Weber with the nay vote. All right, board discussion.
President Warren, uh, board discussion, uh, Dr. Johnson, Professor Johnson, Superintendent Johnson. We sincerely appreciate your diligence, ma'am, and all that you've done, Mr. Weber, thank you, or Mr. 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 Uh, Bob says, well, thank you, sir. And, and, uh, yes, yes, we definitely, uh, working. That much diligence, but we appreciate it. Thank you. With that being said, President Warren, trustees, come back before you all for item seven, board discussion, the twenty twenty-four debt issuance. I know that our team, Mrs. Bolger, Mrs. Scowf, and many that has been waiting patiently working in the virtual world, brothers within the audience are here to interject with that being said, I want to ask that Mrs. Bolger, Mrs. Scowf and the team at this point has the floor. Mr. Bolger, if you can maybe introduce everyone who's with us virtually.
Yes. So virtually we have, um, I'm going to give them time to make sure that their microphones are ready. There's, there's Luke that just popped up and there's Mr. Gardner that just popped up. And, um, so Luke, um, is it Bruggeman? Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Okay. Um, he is with Stifle, um, and he was, I think he, he joined us last time as well. Um, Mr. Elizondo was also um, here with us. And then Mr. Gardner is with Policy Analytics and he joins us and I'll let them each kind of introduce themselves and give a brief summary if I can. Um, Luke, I'll start with you.
Good, uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, we've been working with C W C, the bond market, as we've been looking at. Along the, we've worked together a couple of different areas for different amounts of bond to look at tax rate. Drive update and kind of going to walk through that.
Mr. Gardner.
Thank you. Good evening, a close, Derek Gardner. Policy Analytics, uh, Policy Analytics is a, uh, economic and tax analysis firm located in Indianapolis. Uh, we do, uh, really, uh, property tax, analysis of tax impacts, taxpayer. You know, cities, counties, state, uh, and schools. I'm director of school services, I'm maybe the school conditions. And so we're just, uh, out here to show you some of the information we run, um, at the holder, uh, permission.
And, uh, Mr. Gardner, you were a assistant superintendent of finance at what school?
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, I did twenty-three years in education before moving, uh, the last four, I'm a superintendent for finance and operations at the M S D of Wayne Township on the west side of Indianapolis and then was a CFO of Brownsburg four years before that, uh, in a regulatory role. So I served in the education world, uh, member of the Indiana Urban Association, uh, like regional tools. So uh, familiar with some of the challenges and demographics that, uh, we all face, so I come to their setting, how we best serve our students. So, uh, hopefully Sam will bring a little bit of that as well.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, and with that too, we also have Mr. McCrudy here and Mr. Bolser here uh, available to add to the conversation. Again, um, if there's any questions, what we try to do is we've taken all of the questions and comments that we have had thus far. We didn't want you to think that we had forgotten anything to answer. What we've been doing is pooling as much data so that we can give you more of comprehensive overview as you make these important decisions. Um, so with that, I'm going to, um, hand the torch over to Mr. Gardner. He has a presentation. I did go ahead and put that in your board doc so that if you'd rather see a post and personal tear for you. He is going to, I think, share his screen with you so that you. He is going to, I think, share his screen with you so that you can also see it on the overhead. It is in your Word docs. Um, so that you can follow along there if you're comfortable with that.
Great. Can you, uh, see that, Mrs. Bowler?
We can.
Okay, uh, well, as I told Mrs. Bowler earlier today, uh, please feel free to, uh, interject with any questions that you may have. Um, oftentimes, uh, what we think can be simplistic in school finance, it gets very complicated very quickly when we start getting into tax base analysis. But this is the, the, it's a little bit of a condensed version of a property tax, uh, analysis that we've done for Richmond Community Schools. Uh, to dive into what is the makeup of your, your tax base, uh, what that means on your school funds. And then also what, I think, some of the conversation that the board has been having, you know, around some official debt issuance may have in terms of impact. For the school and, uh, potentially for, uh, local taxpayers. And so, again, I'll go through, please don't hesitate to, to, uh, ask questions. Uh, one of the first things that we do, uh, is we just simply take a look at your tax district composition. We should just have the impact and I'll kind of stroll in and out a little bit, maybe. There are a number of different taxing districts here within the Richmond schools. Uh, and that has impact on your overall tax rate. Uh, the majority of your assessed value really is in that Richmond City Wayne Township. And when you have situations like you see here, which are what we call overlapping tax units. Uh, creating a, an overall tax rate north of four dollars. Uh, that creates what we know as circuit breaker impact, you know, the property tax gap where taxpayers hit the maximum, uh, tax liability they can pay. And no additional revenue can be generated regardless of how high the tax rate is. And so, um, you can see municipal rates, uh, pretty high, uh, it's a dollar sixty-six. That's on the higher end of typically see, uh, within this. And so again, each stack of these various levels, um, that creates some additional impact on the school districts. You don't see these in some of the others where you don't have a municipal tax. What that means is taxes will be different for each homeowner within each of these individual tax districts. Which adds a little bit to that, that complication, but we, we look to break that down. Uh, and then again, see where the assessed value really is falling to the district. Uh, and as you can see, about eighty-four percent of really of your assessed value falls within, uh, the city of Richmond and Wayne Township there. One of the things that we, we look at is the number of parcels and parcels are home sets. Those could be farmlands, agriculture, uh, commercial, uh, all types of, of tax base there are counted in that parcel. And you can see a large majority of those are at the cap. And again, what that means is a homeowner, uh, by stats, you can only pay one percent of the assessed, gross assessed value of their home. So that home's worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, they're only going to pay that one fifteen hundred. No matter how the tax rate, how high the tax rate goes. And so that creates circuit breaker, which is dollars that school corporations don't collect. Uh, and that's something that Richmond places, so you can see when we look at all parcels. Uh, why a large proportion of them are at the cap. And really what that means as well is there's less tax rate sensibility. All right, and so regardless of how you move your tax rate, most of these homeowners, most of your tax. Really going to see a difference in their actual tax bill, uh, because they are already at the cap and potentially far above it. One of the things we, we look at then also, uh, on page four is just what we saw the change of assessed value. Uh, year over year, uh, from twenty-three to twenty-four, um, gross assessed value, that's. An A V before any deductions or appeals, uh, grew by two point eight percent. Uh, you can see the breakdown, pretty big jump in apartments. Apartments oftentimes are assessed by the rent income generated. Uh, and we've seen that across the state this year, uh, with apartments having a little larger bump. But the chart on the left really shows your breakdowns, probably a rough breakdown of assessed value, and you are mainly residential and personal properties. So even though we saw this big jump in apartments, it does give you a needle when it comes to your overall assessed value. Uh, really your residential and personal property are going to do that and they have smaller growth, uh, for the gross assessed value standpoint. When we look at a district's tax base across the state, we really look at two, two things. One is the diversity in that tax base, um, the red, the residential, again, residential is capped at one percent. Your agriculture is capped at two percent and then your commercial, fertile property are taxed at three percent. So overall, you Richmond schools has a pretty diverse tax base, uh, which is always a good sign, uh, for a school district. Uh, but the second indicator that often goes into it is this residential and what's inside of it in terms of home values. Uh, and so I'm gonna come back to this home value here in just a little bit. Those are really the two factors that, that really push through that. Uh, this is just a five-year look, uh, at your gross assessed value, uh, in terms of change. Again, residential has been before you've seen the most growth. Residential A V is, is roughly tied to home values. So if you think of what we have seen in terms of home values across the country during the last two years. That's going to be connected because we're a market-based system. So that's growth of, uh, home values, home prices we see in the market has tended to trend, uh, for some positive growth for school districts. Um, one of the things we provide for the district in our, um, our software here, Policy Analytics, has a literally parcel by parcel. Look at, um, assessed value, uh, across the state. And so I know this is, is a busy map in this piece, but we're able to look at individual parcels. And see what, what the change in overall assessed value has been for each of those across the state. And this is a heat map, uh, so you can see the pockets of red, um, have greater than ten percent decrease. An A V, that could be a situation where, uh, a building has been abandoned, they've moved out some personal property, um, we appreciated that out. Uh, within those pieces, those purple that you see greater than ten percent, most of that's farmland. And that's due to a farming appellation here in the state, uh, but some really varied growth, I guess is the story here within this. Um, and so as we dig down deeper, and I know this is a, again, so apologize for the size, I hope you're able to scroll in a little bit, but. What this chart shows are parcels that had a zero percent change in assessed value from twenty-three to twenty-four. And the pink are residential properties, the green are agriculture and the orange are commercial industrial. Okay, and so what one of the pink, uh, the pink residential, what that's telling us, because again, we're a market-based system. Is that the auditors and the assessors are seeing home prices begin to slow. Um, and we're seeing that across the state. This is not just a trend for Richmond. We've been running this, this particular, uh, chart for all school districts. Because often assessors will use a market-based, a sales training data, a system to project assessed value. And so what that's telling us is they're seeing a slowdown plateau in home prices. Which that's gonna then play into our future projections when it comes to overall assessed value. Uh, and then one of the things we started doing with our school districts is then to step back and say, okay. If this is the assessed value based for Richmond Community Schools, it's really gonna have impact on two particular funds. It's gonna have impact on your operations fund in terms of, uh, revenue, uh, in the operations fund and the net levies. And in your debt service, um, which then gets into your tax rates for those individual leases. So this chart shows the net assessed value per student. Uh, this is an A V M chart, so, uh, average day of membership, so these are school districts that have a similar enrollment to Richmond Community Schools. Uh, so Richmond Community Schools has, uh, at twenty twenty-three at three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars approximately. Uh, per student assessed value. The chart up here on the right shows the twenty-foot percentile, the median seventy percent, seventy-five percent, excuse me, in state average. So the net A V per student is on the lower end or low than the state average for Richmond County Schools. So part of that gets into that, again, composition of home price, home values and, uh, the commercial values within the district. Typically, what you're going to see on this case, uh, as we move to the next chart, is districts on the left of this chart. Are gonna have moved to the right on the next and have a lower tax rate. Uh, because generally speaking, the higher your A V per student, the lower your tax rate can be, it's generating the same amount of value. So this is taking a look at that chart, uh, you know, the biggest thing that obviously stands out, I think, for Richmond Community Schools. Uh, when you look across districts, uh, you know, compared to districts processing, is you have a much lower debt service rate. The majority of the people districts, uh, obviously on this chart, um, in, in that. And so that's what's driving that piece, uh, here, uh, and part of our conversation tonight, what does that look like in order to generate some dollars, uh, for some additional projects? So, you know, when we step back and say, what's our tax rate, how that compare, you are definitely on the lower end, uh, in terms of the tax rate for the season. The next piece that we look at then is the circuit breaker impact, uh, that, that is out there, uh, based on, um. On Richmond schools, and this is that environmental drive, because you typically have, you've got a low tax rate really overall for a school. And if a school district with your size, excuse me, with, you know, the tax rate that you do. Um, wouldn't have a circuit breaker. However, when you go back to one of those original charts that we showed at the beginning, and the majority of your assessed values in Richmond City, where the tax rate overall is four dollars and ten cents. Those overlapping units are creating a situation where the tax rate is high enough that's generating this additional circuit breaker. So really, the majority of your circuit breaker is driven by the multiple overlapping units and the hole on those dollars. At the end of the day, there's only so many dollars available, uh, from taxpayers. And so what that does is it creates circuit breaker, which these are dollars, when you say circuit breaker, what we mean. These are dollars the district does not collect. If you would, if you were receiving your full, a set, full tax rate from your taxpayers, right? And so for Richmond, that's seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars per student, the state average is three hundred and seventy-one dollars per student. Uh, so this does have some impact, um, you know, there, uh, for you, again, something that's really outside of your control. Um, within the school district. The next piece we then look at is just how does your funding stack up? Uh, in, in terms of these A V M's and one of the things I will note, because obviously you stand out here on the left, uh, having some higher. Uh, dollars, you know, ten thousand one hundred dollars per student. Um, the way this chart reads, the bottom blue is net operations fund dollars per student. The purple in the middle is the basic grant, which comes from the state tuition support, that was sixty-two thirty-five. The dark purple here is complexity funding and the light purple at the top is categorical funding, which would be academic honor. N E S P, special education funding, those categories. So when you do the comparison, yes, you're on the higher end, but the majority of those dollars are because you are receiving additional funding for complexity. And, and your categorical, which if I were to guess, would get into your N E S P or English, uh, language learners. And special ed, uh, dollars coming in. Um, again, having experience in Wayne Township, being a part of the urban schools, um, you know, our demographics are typically higher in a situation. We have students that come to us with additional needs, uh, require those additional funds from the complexity and, you know, some of those categoricals. So a caution why you stand out on this chart. It's because you also serve a population that oftentimes has greater needs and needs those additional supports, uh, within that. One of the things that Mrs. Bowler asked us to look at also when we did this analysis was the amount of, uh, assessed value that was taxed exempt. In your district and the growth of that over the last few years. Uh, so that is what we've done here, really the three major ones, you know, there's, can be some other smaller. Three highest, uh, it's rehospital, Earl and College and Indiana University East. Uh, so these are, again, not actual dollars and this is assessed value. Uh, so this is what we would catch upon to generate the actual revenue. Uh, but you can see there has been some growth in that, uh, over the years, but that are, those are dollars, excuse me, those are. That's assessed value that the school district is not able to tap into. All districts have this to a certain extent, governmental properties, uh, some pieces like that, uh, but. Uh, you do have a large portion here with just the, the hospital and the college within that.
If I can real quick, Barry, I'll interject. The reason that slide, I think, is, um, important as we look at Richmond schools as a unit. Is because we are keeping up with the state average growth. And it's one of the things that hinders that, because when you're taking tax value off the books. Um, that will also increase your circuit breaker and then it causes your net A V to not keep up with the growth quotient for the levy. Which will naturally increase your circuit breaker anyway from year to year. Uh, so that's why I think it's, it's a contributing factor that I just wanted to make sure you guys were aware of. That as that net assessed value comes off the books, um, because it's tax exempt, that is another contributing factor. As is, you know, other tax rates that get stacked onto ours, so thank you, Barry.
Hmm, well, thank you. Um, continuing on, another, uh, piece that obviously impacts, uh, your assessed value, uh, there for the district are taxes. Uh, increment I X districts that are established by the city and for the county, uh, two major tip districts there for the school district. Uh, and then again, you can see the growth, uh, there over the last few years. Tiff districts are, I'd say are interesting, debatable kind of situation. So Policy Analytics, we represent, again, it's centered over cities, towns, uh, we do a lot of tip analysis and we often talk about it. But for us, and really what that means is, would this assessed value growth have happened? Had they not tipped the area and put the infrastructure in place to grow, right? So it's an open field, it can't get development to come in on its own. And so the town or county tip staff puts in the infrastructure and that growth happens because of that investment. The question is, is that the case or would that development have happened on its own? And so tiffs can be a, a little bit of a gray area in that state. But I do think it's something for districts to keep an eye on, because the more areas that are captured in the tiff. Uh, kind of back to Mrs. Bowler's comment before, we can see away a little bit of your capacity within that assessed value. So I think it's, it's just having those conversations, being aware of that with the community or how do you work together? Um, because this is an additional funding source, oftentimes for the county or the city to do some projects around, uh, the area as well. That does have some contributing impact on, on your district. One of the things, again, that we're looking at, um, Wayne County's had an interesting piece. So as we project assessed value, I mentioned earlier, um, A V has a lot to do with home values. Uh, and so we've seen a big uptick over the last couple of years in terms of, uh, sales price. This is county-wide, so this is not Richmond-specific. Um, but the, the story that's generally there, uh, across the state is. The home price increases we've seen, you know, from twenty to twenty-one during these last couple of years are starting to slow down. Uh, they're starting to plateau, um, interest rates, we now had a twenty twenty-three, it was a full year of, of interest rate, seeing the seven, eight percent. Uh, mortgages and they were put in place for a reason and that was the slowest, you know. Large trajectory growth of home prices and it, it's done its job, um, you know, in terms of that, that start, we're starting to see that, that plateau. What that means is we look at assessed value, we work with people, we, you know, we provide, say, look, this. Kind of structure out payments, A V growth helps determine some capacity growth in terms of debt service as well. And so as we see that plateau, that is going to have some impact, but we do still see growth in Richmond. Um, for all schools, we've kind of pulled back that stack, we think A V is gonna grow, keep growing at a fairly large pace. Because we're seeing this pullback in. because we're seeing this pullback in home prices. So when we talk about assessed value growth, and again, that capacity, we do continue to see growth in Richmond Schools. Our projections currently stand that, over the next ten years, on average, you'll see two-point-three percent annual growth in assessed value in the community for you, and you can see that trend. I like to look, I have a question of this year.
Yeah, just real quick, Barry, Mr. Weber has a question.
I mean, that seems, that seems real aggressive for, you know, someone that's lived here for twenty-five years, that we would maintain that level for the next ten years. I mean, I know you have a lot more data and inputs than, than I do, just living here, but that seems really aggressive. So, I don't know if you can, can, you know, expound on how you came to that growth?
Yes, I, I can. I mean, so there's a couple of pieces, you're right. On any given year, that could be a little, that's an average piece. So one, you're going to have years that are higher, that will, will show here, and some that are a little bit lower. And you can see that a little bit in historical piece. You, one of the things that you have going for you as well, is you have to remember, back to one of the original charts, your tax-based composition is fifty-six percent residential, at the one percent. Many of our school districts across the state are in the seventy-ish percent residential, and so that's when they're really tied to the housing value. So it's a balance in our analysis for you in Richmond Community Schools, is you're going to have growth in the personal property sector, in the commercial sector, where we've seen a little bit more steady growth over the last ten years. And so, those inputs are also brought into this. So this is not just based on housing. This is based on the personal property sector, the agricultural sector, all those different pieces combined within that. So, so that's a part of that piece that we see kind of put together.
And that will also be, that's something that I'm sure Luke will bring up too, as we look to at a debt service rate. There's different ways you can roll that debt issuance in to impact that rate. You could go as conservative as you would like, with no growth. You know, you also get into, in looking at the abatements, and as abatements fall off, you'll see some spikes in, increase in the net assessed value. Or if a TIP sunsets, you'll, you know, you'll get some of that value back. So there's those things that we also take into consideration when looking at value growth.
You mentioned personal property, and I, I mean, my impression was the state was on a trend, in effect, eliminate, add the lower personal property taxes. Do you disagree with that assessment?
So, there has been talking, that's currently the way the personal property works, is it can be depreciated down to a floor of thirty percent. There had been legislation discussed in previous sessions that would take away that thirty percent floor, that would allow them to depreciate it down to zero. I'd not heard or seen that legislation introduced in the last two sessions. Not to say, you'd be a very student that these, that is a thing we have to keep an eye on, because if they were to bring that back, that would have some impact on this. But as of right now, there's nothing on the radar that we have heard in terms of bringing that back.
As somebody that followed that legislation very closely, because it was fifty-six of my previous tax base, because of the factory that was there. And I also, as a previous county assessor, the flooring, funding floor is very important, because it protects the backside of that investment. Where upfront, they usually have abatement that comes off the books. So that backside is the protection for the taxpayer. There is, to Mr. Cross's point, that they have taken off, where if you're under a certain value, for like a lot of your smaller farmers and smaller personal property, there's a floor for that as well. So that has come already off of our books. Right now, there hasn't been anything introduced, most recently, to stabilize that value loss, because what we were able to show, and I think he had a slide to this, is there's been some unattended shift to real estate, real property owners, and that is what has caused some of their spikes, is that shift in that assessed value as they take some of the personal property off. Because we're at the level now where it's a bigger business for personal property, rather than just a mom or pop store that is taxed, so.
Thank you for those three questions. As we continue with this chart, so there's a little bit here to digest. The blue bars on the chart are the historical previous years in terms of assessed value growth year over year. The green is for twenty-twenty-four, where the district grew, assessed value for budget year twenty-four, for two-point-three percent. The purple represents what the district growth would have been had they not passed House Bill fourteen ninety-nine, which included some changes in the standard deduction. So in, in, in previous years, that deduction was thirty-five percent. And so, the way to think about this in simple terms, without getting too deep in the weeds, is if a home was worth a hundred thousand as a gross assessed value, they would take that thirty-five thousand dollars off the top before starting the taxation process. In twenty, they've now moved it in twenty-four from thirty-five percent to forty percent. In twenty-twenty-five, it comes back to thirty-seven and a half percent. And then in twenty-six, it goes back to the original twenty, excuse me, thirty-five percent. What's that mean? So that, what that meant is now back to that hundred thousand dollars, you're going to do an deduction of forty percent, or forty thousand, which is going to, in theory, save the taxpayer dollars, but you're, you're reducing the assessed value available to the school district. And so, it did have an impact across the state, that schools did not see the growth in assessed value had they not made that change. So the purple bar represents where the district would have grown in calendar year twenty-four, if it had stayed at the thirty-five percent. To add to this, though, as we look in twenty-five, we see the purple bar at one-point-six. The orange bars represent where Policy Analytics right now is projecting assessed value to actually come in. The orange is a little higher than the purple, had they not passed that legislation. And that really is the rolling off of that deduction. So this two percent of assessed value that the district did not capture in budget year twenty-four isn't lost, it's just spread out over the next couple of years. And so that's why we're projecting a little higher growth in both twenty-five and twenty-six, than you would have had they not passed that legislation, just because of that AV rolling us off. And so, again, not lost, just spread out. And so that's a piece, again, just to practice in terms of the calculations.
Which actually is good timing for us, as we're looking at doing an issuance. It's actually a great timing mechanism for us to help absorb that.
It, it's also, like I said, Luke could probably speak this better. It's always typically better for districts when you have smoother AV growth, then you have spikes, valleys in AV growth, in terms of, you know, projecting a lot of those things kind of help moving forward, so.
And I would assume that rolling off was taken into account in your page sixteen graph of the net assessed? That?
Yes.
So, so that contributed to some of that?
Yes.
That's fact in all our calculations, as we move forward tonight. One of the other pieces legislatively that was out there was a cap on MLGQ, the maximum levy growth quotient. This is how the operations fund levy grows, the percentage is the rolling average of non-farm income in the state of Indiana over the past six years. And so, your, your operations levy is just multiplied by this percentage each year. Again, similar themes here, the purple shows have they not passed the legislation, what would have happened? It would have been five-point-one percent across the state in twenty-four, projected at four-point-nine in twenty-five. They capped this, and they put a new calculation in. So for Richmond, that's a four percent growth in twenty-four, and a three-point-nine percent growth in twenty-five. This is a little bit of a trajectory change, because if you think of, think of your retirement account, you know, you go in and you put your retirement account, it's going to grow by eight percent or seven percent, and it ends up twenty years without getting a very different number. Same kind of theory here, this is going to have an ongoing impact. And we brought a little bit of that analysis for Mrs. Bowles, in terms of where we see a revenue going in future years. The other piece to consider for MLGQ is anytime we see a chart like this, where the MLGQ is at a four to five percent, and your AV growth is less than that, and in your case, the two, two and a half percent. In order to maximize your operations fund levy, you have to increase your operations fund rate, the way the math behind the scene works. And so, when you do increase that rate, because you want to maximize that operations fund levy, it does create a little bit of circuit breaker, additional circuit breaker, I should say. And so, that is also a part of the calculation that we provided in terms of this is, again, multiple things kind of counteracting one another in terms of what your dollars end up looking like, moving forward.
For example, when we passed the excess levy for the transportation and the operations fund, we grew that rate a little bit, right? So in growing that rate, our levy that we were asking for was four-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand. We will net receive two-hundred-and-seventy thousand, because we're going to lose some to circuit breaker. However, we're going to still net a gain ahead of that additional revenue. So that's kind of in realistic terms what he's referring to there.
And to go back to page, I apologize. Ten. I think our overall goal is we're at a seventy-five cent rate, with twelve cents being debt service, sixty-three cents being the operating, to grow that bar closer to the middle of the graph, and moving expenses that are in operations into the orange part. So that orange part's going to be larger, the operations piece, the blue, is going to be smaller. That bucket's going to be smaller, but we're not going to be taking out turf for, for Leibert, or whatever the next project is. It's going to be strictly, it's going to be more personnel costs instead of updating.
We'll, we'll be able to, instead of segment some of our facility projects over five years or whatever, by the time you finish it, you're, you know, yeah, it's, yeah. It's actually finishing it into finality, so that you can then move the dial to the next project. And then, what it also does is in the way we're absorbing this with some of that increase with value as that House and World Act starts to phase back down with the supplemental homestead. Then we also then look and project ahead, and I know Luke and his team does, helps us with that, to help roll, in order to stabilize them. Once you get us, once we get that rate where we're looking at, as far as that chart's concerned, then it's trying to make it stable, and to stabilize it the best we can. And then to have, okay, now we need this roof project, or we need this HVAC project, then we have a plan to put it into that next issuance to stabilize us out then.
Just to comment on your TIP district, there's a project in process over the next couple of years within that Richmond Center TIP district, which will add a hundred-and-twenty-five apartments, that's about a fourteen million dollar projected assessed value to that.
And the reason those are important things to look for is because that theoretically, you're adding that much housing. Usually with that or development comes students into your, you know, to your schoolhouse. So you're trying to provide services to this hopeful influx in students that we'll receive, or through our census data influx and people here. But without that value coming in to be able to service them, it does become difficult. Where we have it on the educational side for the, in the classroom, but it does put an extra strain on the need for our operational side too, that we're not seeing that. That's why your new appointment will be really important, we're really closely together on that.
Yeah. So I brought that up to the redevelopment commission, and the developer was quick to point out, oh, there'll be no kids in that development, really.
We were actually seeing that in my, my previous district, that's why it is big. And I actually just heard on the news this morning that Peru High School is seeing an influx, preparing for an influx there too, because it's still over from where there are certain developments, so that it is something to be mindful of. Back to you, Barry.
Great conversation. So, one of the things that we were asked to do then was to provide some analysis as you're looking at the issuance. Our full package has all five of these. We typically run what we call a levy scenario, we keep the, the debt service levy the same. We'll often run a debt rate scenario study, we keep the debt service rate constant, kind of as may, as districts may do that. For tonight's purposes, I really focused on the certain scenarios, three and four, and can talk a little bit, we have included the scenario five, beginning to look at, if you were to do an issuance like this, what would be the impacts there? So, in both at least, I will say three and four, we took some of the information from Luke and Jim there, Stiefel, and plugged that in. Those two had about a six-cent increase in the tax rate. I believe the scenario five had a nine cent. We didn't run this in particular, but we, we can always with the district. But, so we looked at the impact of a six-cent increase on homesteads. This is just on homesteads, this is not any commercial property. So, the majority of starting to hear Richmond City is obviously looking at larger, as opposed to seventy-seven hundred parcels. Homes start hitting the cap, meaning they're not going to pay any additional taxes within the home value, the gross assessed value of homes around eighty thousand. So, so not a, a very high amount before they begin hitting the cap. The other thing that I wanted to point out is, basically seventy percent of your homeowners are already after property back payment. What that means is, you could raise your debt service rate a dollar, and they are not going to pay any additional taxes within that piece. I know that's not what you're contemplating, but it's just the state, that's the fact that they are, are not tax rate sensitive really. So, they're not going to have an increase, and that's seventy percent of your homes will not see an increase with this potential six cent increase.
And just real quick, it's even higher overall, because the homestead drives down the net assessed value, because the supplemental homestead, that's thirty-five percent. For this year, it's forty percent, next year it's thirty-seven and a half percent. And then, then also, the other properties don't have those deductions. So, overall, it's a little bit higher, once you add all of the additional parcel counts in. But the homesteads, because they see that decrease with their net assessed values with that homestead, that's why seventy percent, although that's still very, that's still very high.
And so, as we look at this chart, what it is saying is a home that had a fifty thousand dollar assessed value is, would see potentially a six-dollar increase in their taxes for the calendar year. So, fifty cents, come on. Seventy-five thousand would see a ten-dollar increase a year. If any parcel really hit above this eighty thousand, is not going to see an increase. And so that is why those are zeros. The Boston Township, smaller number of parcels, a little higher home values here, so this is where you do see a little impact, the higher amounts. But this range, again, is anywhere from six, to call it sixty dollars on an annual basis. So five dollars a month. So, when you're looking at least at homesteads, it's a pretty minimal impact in terms of, in the annual basis. These obviously are lower value homes, so you know, you are hitting a demographic, socioeconomic group that's obviously on the lower end, but these are still fairly small amounts in terms of that, that increase. So, the question then is,
And real quick, Barry, you, he also did provide us with, with what Richmond Community Schools' average assessed value home is, for this year was ninety-three. Um, home is for this year was ninety-three thousand, just to give you um an idea of where that average would fall in this.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So one of the other analysis that we do is to say, where's the money coming from? Uh, so the way this chart reads, takes a little interpretation, I apologize. For every one dollars of debt service levy increases, we're looking at kind of a per dollar piece. So every time at the school district, for every dollar increase, the school district has been received fifty-eight cents. In their debt service fund. Um, they're going to lose forty-two cents in your operations fund. Because as you increase your debt service, you do increase your circuit breaker impact. And so uh this, we break down this dollar. There's additional fifty-eight cents in new money, a loss of forty-eight-two cents. So overall, it's a net gain for the student, school. It's just happening in the debt service fund versus the operation funds. When we look at this dollar then as well, kind of these bottom three bars, we're saying the school is giving up forty-two cents to help pay for this. The other taxing units, so the county, the city, the other special units are contributing forty-six cents of every dollar. And the taxpayers are contributing twelve cents of every dollar. So. When you look at this chart, what this says is you increase for every dollar you increase. The school is going to see a little bit of additional. Impact of operations fund. You are going to impact some of the other taxing units. Um, it's fairly minimal. I think when I looked at the liability, uh, it's about one and a half percent. Uh, decrease on their annual levies, uh, if the impact on the other taxing units. So they do see a little bit within that. Um, but again, the piece I think the school has to rationalize is. School districts have, and I'm putting on my school hat, so I apologize if this may come across a little one-sided, but. Uh, school districts have limited ways for that order to generate new revenue. You don't control your state tuition support uh in the state of Indiana. You don't control your operations fund levy. Really, the only fund and the only mechanism is the debt service fund. The TIPS and the other funding uh mechanism, cities and towns have, schools don't have as many of those. Uh, so this is the one place where you can, can look to, to generate some additional dollars. Um.
And I think we should point out that the city of Richmond has used the TIP district mechanism to pull. Substantial amount of dollars from the school sys, not, not just from the school system, but it has pulled. Millions of dollars from the school system over the last, what, since nineteen seventy for the downtown district or somewhere in that ballpark? And that, that impacts somewhere between a half million to a million dollars a year, our budget. At TIP district.
They, yes, I, you're exactly right. I mean, it's, it's pulling from that. Um, and again, I think that's that cost of analysis for the district um in your reality of maintaining the facilities that you have. Uh, investing in those, those facilities um within that. The next user, I apologize, I know there's a lot of numbers. I'll try to break this down. This is the analysis that we do for Mrs. Bowser and then for. Uh, kind of Stiefel. So we take the, we took the information that uh Stiefel gave us in terms of saying, here's the levy. Uh, needed uh in order to make the payments associated with the fifty million dollar debt issuance. We're able to then calculate the circuit breaker loss uh here in the middle. Um, we are then also able to say the net levy, uh, so the dollars again, circuit breaker loss falls on the operation fund. Uh, before it ever falls on the debt service. So you're typically gonna see circuit breaker loss in the debt service fund. You're only going to see it on the operations fund. Uh, and so it's an interesting kind of piece. Overall, you do see increasing circuit breaker. Generally what it's doing, this is really a credit to the district going after that transportation levy deal. Because that is factored into these numbers. Um, it basically flatlines for the next few years. Your operations fund levy, but you're not necessarily losing dollars. Uh, so not saying it's got to feel some additional pressure on the operations fund, but it's not creating a, a, a huge loss. You're not losing five hundred thousand dollars in, in, in operations fund dollars um off the, right off the bat. Um, you do see a little bit of um relief because the way it's currently run, I just wanna point this out the bottom, the, the tax rates. Um, I think Steve would have built in a little bit of a cliff to potentially come back and manage. Um, you know, from twenty-six to twenty-seven, as Mrs. Bowser was kind of talking about, they managing to that rate. Uh, we've just simply applied the levy payments associated with this particular issuance for the time being. Uh, within these uh similar, again, analysis uh with the. Excuse me, twenty million dollar issuance, a little bit more circuit breaker impact, but not much. We could, again, set six cents. Um, look, so really the fifteen and twenty don't look that different in terms of impact. Uh, it's just extended out a little bit more in twenty-seven. Um, when you look at the thirty million dollar issuance, this is the one I, I did reference, there is a little bigger bump. Uh, because you put out a nine cent increase ahead. On the taxpayers, you're not going to see, um, it's a pretty minimal still in that. Uh, you do, this is one case where you do see a little bit of circuit breaker revenue loss uh from twenty-four to twenty-five before it comes back up. Uh, the district just needs to, to be aware of. Uh, this is the chart that we often focus on when districts are doing this analysis. Because if, if this is where I guess I, I reference this as a cost benefit analysis, you know, for the board for the district. When you raise your debt service fund, you're going to generate more property tax revenue. Now, and you can see that probably most explicitly in the red line, which is that thirty million dollar issuance. Compared to maybe the orange line is that you just kept the debt service rate at the current twelve cents. They're gonna generate more overall revenue. Now, the operations fund, you're not going to receive as much because you're gonna have a circuit breaker loss. That's why you see this dip. So the question really becomes, how do you maximize those dollars? And I think that conversation was happening a little bit earlier. Those dollars in the debt service to create those operational efficiencies and address the projects needed. To really offset maybe some potential loss in this operations fund revenue. That's a balance a lot of districts do. We had a similar analysis in MSD Wayne. Uh, we worked with Luke there. We did the same piece. We are hit heavy by circuit breaker. We chose to really max out that, that uh, that debt service levy, the total revenue. And use the bonds and the debt service fund to create some of the operational efficiencies. Uh, because at the end of the day, it's more dollars in your pocket that you're able to maximize. I go back to that original comment, um, schools have limited ways to generate revenue, debt service is one. Uh, and, and so that is that mechanism that, that kind of shows within that. So. That's just to be, a piece to be aware of. I don't think it's any different than you've seen a lot of districts impacted by circuit breaker like you are. Uh, who have this analysis, who have needs uh that we see across the, the state. Um, and that is the condensed version of our, our report. Uh, one of the. Answer any questions, kind of fun things. I know it's a lot of information in a short amount of time.
And just to make sure I understand that last page.
Yeah.
Our current net income in operations is about eight point three million dollars. And with. The fifteen or twenty million dollar debt issuance, it moves our total net revenue into debt service. And operations to nine, seven, nine, eight range. So it's an increase of about one point five million dollars to the district.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that graph correctly. So we're looking at a net number of about one point five billion.
Yes. And you can kind of see that here by both the ones you started um a little bit previous. You can see that play out. Um, in this certified uh levy, and this is the twenty million dollar issuance. Uh, you know, your, your certified levy is going to grow by about one point two million in this case. Uh, the net levy grows again because you have that circuit breaker by about, you know, seven hundred thousand. Um, again, the difference I'd say is the leverage that you have and the leverage you can pull with debt service. Because you can generate the cash upfront, you know, that you can use that payment for over the years. But you are correct. And that's how it's kind of shown in the numbers here as well.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly.
Um, I had a question. The uh, the analysis, I mean, you never made any reference that I heard to. The other taxing districts is they adjust their budgets and that, their debt levels. I assume you get back to square one eventually, maybe ten years down the road. I mean, if, if you're gonna take money from my taxing district. I'm going to reevaluate my position and possibly make adjustments and the pie would have to be. I mean, how, how does that fit in the analysis? Is that, am I overthinking it or?
No, no, you're not. You're, you're very, very good. Uh, it's a, it's a little bit, I'd say, I don't know. It's a little bit of a chess game, I think they can talk to you. So our assumptions when we do this is that. We're really keeping the other units' rates steady in this, this analysis. We have to make that baseline assumption. To your point, if you increase your rate and so does one of the other units, it's only going to generate some additional circuit breaker impact. Which would not impact your debt service for the project, but would create some additional loss in the operations fund. It's a similar on the other side that we often talk with districts. If you, let's say, decrease your rate by five cents. And you think they're going to see some additional dollars in the operations fund from circuit break relief. And the other units can increase their rate, unit amount. So it's really a game that it's hard to. To project on what the other units are going to do. So to your question and our analysis, we assume they're gonna stay standard. And part of our analysis, uh, we're getting ready to do with districts is when the budget order comes out, which is the approved rates for all units. Here in the next couple of weeks, we rerun this analysis uh for school districts so they can see that final impact. Uh, and we can adjust the numbers, but that's how at least we approach it currently.
It, it is very fluid and that's why you will see too, because it is a bit of a. Chess match or, or give and take and fluidity with it. The peer comparison here. That's why the legislature continues to give more tools. It's the one with the, the bar, the bar uh graph here. That's why I think as those sorts of things happen to Mr. Webber's point, that the legislators give us different tools in our tool belt. To be able to utilize. Um, because what we, the best that we can do is look at state averages to see, okay. Where do, you know, throughout the state, where do the percentage of the overall tax rate, where does it lie? In comparison to all the other rates, we are severely behind that. So as we try to right that ship, what if they, you know, right their ship back? That's why some have decided to do an operating referendum. And what you do is just try to balance that out where we're. Way over here on this analysis, some have taken the light blue approach, which is that operating referendum. To go outside of that chess game, um, to Mr. Webber's point and be able to tap into some of those TIP AV values. Uh, to Mr. Zaleski's point. So that's why it just depends on what others do. Because with the circuit breaker, we are so intertwined now where we never used to be. Um, that's why it really has to be a collective, you know, approach with all the units because. Um, as goes a school, goes a community. And so you try to really balance all of those things.
I just get a little nervous that, you know, we've, we've had, I think, a, a very optimistic growth for the next ten years. And then we've not accounted any adjustments. Um.
And we can accounts like that.
So as I'm spending those dollars, I mean. You know, I, it just, I think I have to be super conservative.
When we budget, I don't budget for assumed growth, just to, to take that point forward. Um, in fact, I usually project growth loss when, when putting together the budget, um, just to have that protection. And I think Luke and his team does that as well when they're looking at the rate, especially if we get to the point of saying, okay. You know, as our other debt falls off and we look to stabilize that, really at that point then, when you're looking to stabilize that. Or that value or that rate, once you get it to that level, you really then can go ultra conservative and, and project no growth. We've done debt issuances actually. Um, I haven't worked with Lucas closely until this, this last one here or this most recent one. But I've worked with Mr. Alizondo, who you met last week. And that's one of the things that you balance as you're issuing that debt is, do you show uh projected growth? Do you stabilize it? Um, to be ultra conservative. So those are things that we can build in as we issue that debt and look at the funding length as well.
Just, just add on to that too. Whenever I walk through the slide, we predict a zero percent growth for all of the debt payments. So hopefully it is, hopefully very, very assumptions are right. All that's gonna do is drive down the rate a little bit. And I, I can walk through that a little bit as well, but uh, I, I agree. Whenever we're locking payments over fifteen, twenty-year period. Sometimes it all takes one, one recession, it makes you change the trajectory of that setting. So we try to be conservative because you're locking and changing ones. Over a, you know, fifteen, twenty-year period.
With that, if there's no more questions for Mr. Gardner, I'll like, I'll, that kind of goes right into Mr. Uh, or Luke's, Luke's presentation. So. Luke, if you wanna take my full of the screen.
Alright, perfect. Everyone see that?
Getting there. Yep.
Okay, perfect. So this, this is gonna be very similar to what I'll comment showed about a month ago to you guys. The one difference is that we have got a lease unit in the draft with seventeen eighty, we know that, and it's older. Uh, supplied some comments that we're estimating on where the two thousand twenty four rate is gonna end up. So that is one change that, that you'll see all along through so far since, because we have updated a little bit based on what uh Barry put together. And try to incorporate some of that into the analysis. So in two thousand twenty-four, we're projecting the debt payment. The debt service rate be right at fifteen cents. Then you'll see it in twenty-five and twenty-six, about a half a cent lower. And then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, if some of the bond issues pay off, they drop down to the next limit by two thousand twenty-nine, just to look out. So the force through that we ran was ten million, fifteen million, twenty million and thirty million, just to show what the tax impact can be. Uh, one thing, what the tax impact as Barry just walked through is that we're showing what the tax rate increase would be. But again, that does not necessarily mean that is going to be an increase to the tax bill for the majority of the taxpayers. I think it was nearly seventy percent of the, the homesteads were half the tax. And then once you factor in Boston, the town of Boston, Boston Township. I can't give it that most, maybe a five, uh, five dollar a month increase uh under the scenario that Barry put together. So keep that in mind as, as we've walked through this. The other assumptions that, that were, that I'm using and, and again, I'm trying to be conservative with this. Is that we're assuming zero percent AV growth all the way going forward. We're also assuming interest rate of five percent. Uh, given that if this, if you do decide to do a bond issue, probably still a few months away from next to the box again. The interest rates, if you sold bonds today, you're probably in the four percent or just under uh rate. So again, should be a little bit, little bit of push to mix. So starting with the ten million dollar option, um, this would be a fifteen-year repayment. You can see the increase here uh in a couple. For the first couple of years and then um as, as some of that debt falls off, there will be a tax rate decrease, leaving opens of future capacity. So this would be approximately recent increase in your debt service rate. If you had growth of about two point three percent, that's gonna decrease that debt service rate impact by about half a penny. So keep that in mind because that number can be pretty similar for, for all of us. And if you continue out that growth, two point three is obviously just gonna. Uh, decrease that, that rate a little bit, unless the payments are set. So if you issue ten million in two thousand twenty-four, your capacity going forward would be about twenty-four, twenty-five million. You decide to take a little bit larger bite of the apple, then you increase, uh, it would be more than fifteen million. That debt service rate will increase by about four percent over the estimate two thousand twenty-four. Again, still leaving some capacity here for future projects. Since you're borrowing a little bit more now, it can be a little bit less capacity here. So you're looking at uh twenty, twenty-one million for future capacity. So going to a twenty million dollar option, again, borrowing a little bit more now, five, six over five and a half cent debt service. And rate increase over, for that rate, uh, borrowing a little bit more now, so leaving a little bit less capacity uh that going. So for that rate, uh, borrowing a little bit more now, so leaving a little bit less capacity, uh, that's going forward. Which results in about eighteen million in future estimated capacity. Uh, one thing I should point out too, is these are really interest only this year. So if interest rates come in lower than five percent or if they become a bit higher than expected, yeah, that's just, that's just going to, to drop the rate. Uh, so that, those are a couple of levers that we'll have, or I guess things that I'll back talk about. But if it does work out better, then we'll assume it can just, again, drive that rate down. For a thirty million dollar borrowing at fifteen year repayment, that can be a hang sent increase over the two thousand twenty four rate. Uh, again, this can get a little bit less capacity going forward because you're borrowing more. So if you borrow thirty million now, you're gonna have around ten million dollars estimated capacity. So a lot of the, the conversation is really, how much do you wanna borrow now, how much do you wanna borrow later? And where do you want your, where do you want your tax rate to be at in the future? Um, you know, we, we're just assuming that wherever it ends up, and it can be years, we've been through some payments, and we're just gonna set it at, going forward. By no means you have to keep it there, you could either increase it beyond that, you could either drop from there, or you can maintain that. Uh, we're trying to give you some flexibility, knowing this school corporation is going to have ongoing needs, uh, that after a couple of years, these can come back, once those projects are, are completed, these can come back a couple of years later, funds for different projects, if you need to. And Barry had a lot of these slides on, um, uh, on, on his presentation here, I guess, before, uh. So if you look at all the, we, we try to compare all the different school corporations that are really nearby, we can see the school corporations that are within, within the conference as well. Uh, you'll notice again, there's a little bit of a difference between, uh, the rate that Barry had is. While we have an art, again, that is just a difference of including what was in that initial graph with the seventeen eighty two notice. Uh, so this may change slightly, but generally that the, the tax rate where you stand, uh, among here is not. So you can see all the way out here, we were about a, there's another dollar eighty for a total tax rate, and, and it would be around, uh, eighty cents. If you look at just debt service rate, it is significantly lower. You guys have to have one of the lowest debt service rates in the state of Indiana, especially for a school in your office. Um, if you look here, just on average, I mean, it's probably around fifty to sixty, forty, fifty, sixty cents. And you guys are predicting to be around fifteen cents beginning in two thousand twenty four. Looking all the way left, just Blue River Valley, at ninety two cents in West Lafayette, it's there.
Uh, Luke, did you, did you change the slide? I, we don't see the slide change on our end to just the debt, we've got the total tax rate. Is your next slide just the debt rate? There we go.
Yeah.
There you go.
Okay, I'll just keep it here, doesn't want to have any technology problems. So, so again, you, you guys are on the far, the far right hand side at fifteen cents. On average, it's probably, I mean, if you're looking at this, if it's forty, fifty, sixty, pretty average rate, uh, all the way up to on the far left hand side, you've got some of the, the ninety cent rating. Um, so as, as Barry alluded to, unfortunately, the state's kind of forced everyone's hand with the one lever that you really have to, to maximize revenue, uh, is debt service and, and trying to move, shift as many expenditure that you would pay for out of operations to debt service. Um, so it's, it's a, an unfortunate reality in, in some, some instances, that it's the lever that you really have to pull and everything else is really set by it. So tho- those are the scenarios, I know I went through this pretty quick, uh, but I also want you guys to walk through those about a month ago with, with Jim. Uh, the, the biggest thing is that there's going to be a, a some sort of slight tax rate increase, but not many homes are, are going to actually feel that increase because they're, they're out of cash. Um, I'll pause there, happy to answer any questions as well.
Barry, any questions for Luke or Barry?
I think more of a comment, just, uh, I, I understand where John's coming from of wanting to be conservative, but property tax finance is crazy, uh, complicated. And if we don't use the tools that legislature has given us, then really we're doing a disservice, I think.
Such a competitive environment almost anymore, you know, and so it's just trying to maximize the resources that we have available to make sure that we're providing the best resources and facilities and educational experience for our students, um, that we can. With that, um, you know, tonight, I think it was too long, we wanted to make sure that you had an answer and hopefully, um, that its information answered all of your monetary, financial questions that you guys had, whether it be tip revenue or property tax impact or circuit breaker impact. And it kind of went down by the, um, value of the home to show you those impacts. Now, um, what we have also, you know, last time we also talked, and if it's okay, uh, I know Barry's really wanting to watch that IU Purdue game, or I turned Purdue Iowa game. Really, that's me, um, so. If you guys don't have any questions for them, I'll let them go about their evening.
Thank you, Mr. Dogger.
Thank you.
Thank you for giving us some of your time today.
We also wanted to, um, talk about, you know, all, last meeting, we had the amount of projects that need to be done or the, the outstanding projects or the needs. Um, and then also we talked about that matrix, I did provide that to you guys and have it also here tonight. Paper form, put it in the board pack, so we have it various different forms. Um, one of the things that we also try to balance with not only the amount of the issuance is the impact, because obviously we do wanna be aware not only to the impact to the school, but certainly the taxpayer, um, as we're trying to balance the needs and, and provide for our school district. Um, if we look at keeping it as an uncontrolled project, or project, that, that marker was about six point three million, we'd have to take that into consideration with the location and the individualized project. Um, so with that, we did, um, you have the matrix, again, it was in order to not provide fifty of them, we'll pass this around. Um, fifty of these, we just set an amount, um, that can certainly change with the input that we've received tonight. Uh, and then I'm also going to pass this around, this is double sided, um, for just that projects, kind of needs and where we are with that, um, so. Let's talk.
Yeah, can I just say one thing before we get started? Um, as you're looking at projects, these are some that are just in the most, um, most needy areas or have been a part of discussions around this table or in academic conversations about curriculum and instruction. They are not all inclusive of all projects, at some point that we needed in the district. That's just a normal fluid thing, that's part of facility planning, things come up that we don't expect. So one thing that I just would like everyone to take under consideration is this is for issuance on specific projects. This is a leasehold, you have to identify the areas, that's why that matrix is super important. This is not for throw-ins, it is not for routine maintenance, it is not for day-to-day things that need repairs. This is for very specific things that, that you finish, like you start and you finish. And so there will still be need for operational funding in facilities on every routine level year, that doesn't change that. But this provides, as Jamie said, that's a shift of some of the projects that maybe would have been paid through that fund into debt. Um, so it's just, it doesn't take over all operational funding needed to maintain our district. It is strictly for very specific purposes. What I will also note, and we've had this conversation in the past, modifications to this are very minimal after a certain point in time in which the board proves. So the discussions that we're having today are super important to Jamie and to me because we have to make sure that the attorneys and the financial, um, people get everything they need to design this in a very, um, specific way that is mandatory and worthy of taking. Um, so there won't be, I mean, there'll be small amount of flexibility, but it will not be substantial. And so that's why the conversation is super important tonight, um, for us. So I just wanted to review those facts because it does matter, um, for the facility side, for me to understand that, you know, this conversation is really important and we don't want it to be too fluid.
So if we see something that, um, is not listed, for example, and we're like, well, we've talked about that in the class, we're not seeing it on here. Now would be the time to say where is, or what.
What I will say is, this is only a portion of this. This is only a portion of what happens every day across the desk. Like, I had to add something to this that we didn't even talk about last time, because it came up yesterday. But it's important and it's big and it's substantial enough to add to the list. There will be things that happen during the debt issuance that we might have to adjust and use for operations. We have hundreds of them, so, um, so yes, now's the time, you can say that. I can, you know, give you what information on that I have. Um, but facilities is one of those things that change hour by hour. I mean, almost literally, I hate to say that, but it's just the way it is and it's the nature of the beast, so. But yeah, now's the time to talk about it.
That I've wondered about, um, we've talked over the years about, um, the renovation, possible renovation of the old, like, second floor of RHS. Um, is that something that we're looking at at all, um?
So over last summer, flooring was installed, that was already through.
Right.
Um, we painted it at the end of the summer, I fixed the blaster and railing when the tower was done. So it has been fully renovated, are you, there were new desks ordered for the staff, there's new partitions, what more are you wanting renovated in that area?
We adopted.
The use of it?
Yes, it was more the use and, um, yes, it was the flooring, the painting, a lot of the stuff. It seems like we were making progress
Yeah.
towards that, and it sounds like, I mean, and I know we've, I've seen some of it, and it sounds like we are, I just don't really.
That would be, and if we decide, so there's some things to that. First and foremost, you have to staff the student area, you have to make sure that, that it's, you know, it's not, it's very manageable, I guess, as far. Um, in this list, you will see there's an area that is four, I have to bomb my ultimate. Um, this is why classroom furniture, corner fixtures, flooring, painting and updates, dependent on time. I know there are things we wanna update that are strictly fixtures, like, I'm sure like classroom furniture, that's where that would land. We have done a tremendous amount of work in months, twelve months in that area. So all of those aesthetic things are finished, other than just maybe like, what do we want to do with the bookcases? They're all there, they're intact, they look great, but is there a different use that we wanna do? The bones are already finished, it should just, if we repurpose, I think that that's a communication that, you know, we continue to actually have with the high school as they look at areas of space and, and utilization of things. Um, but I also know that there were concerns when we looked at, yes, so there, there's a lot of things. So, but that's where that would land on this.
You mentioned ruins, is that kind of what you're talking about with ruin?
So ruins to me are, we just, we make a quick decision that we hadn't planned for.
Okay.
That we all of a sudden decide is important. That, that's something, because you have to do planning to do the budget, you have to do planning eighteen months, then something on. If you're gonna do debt, sometimes it's more than that, because we're already talking about twenty eight, twenty nine now. So those are just a way that I, um, that I just, I sort of arrange that stuff, it's something we didn't expect at the time of training. That we just are talking about all of the stuff we're doing. So that, that's what that means.
Okay.
To me, I mean, but there's a lot of that, so, um, that, that is when you make, you know, you decide to, to, or the state decides for you, that there are changes that have to be made to certain circular areas that impact what you have to have in rooms or what you, those are things you don't expect, but you have to throw them into your ear.
Okay, but in regards to that particular project, it sounds like it's still evolving. It's still, there are conversations that are still.
Eighty percent there as far as all of the, all of the required things to change, whatever needs to be, it's there now. You know, I think that now we're talking about a cultural conversation and an internal conversation on how that would be utilized and what the, you know, the total package would look like at that.
And it looks like you already have some funds allotted if.
Well, they're to be determined.
Yes, need be.
Yeah, it's just, you know, that's, that's always a part of, furniture's a part of every year's budget because things break or you maybe wanna update something, that's a natural part of it, that's why it says dependant on scope. Because we just have to decide at the time how things are allocated. Um, I do meet with principals in spring and in fall to talk about the things that they wanna do, the things that they, you know, are seeing, maybe that they wanna make a few changes. It's super important, um, that they communicate with me on facility, you know, wants, on needs, um, I mean, apartment heads. It's, that communication is absolutely necessary. And so I try really hard to have touch points multiple times throughout the year to make sure that they're heard and to make sure that we're, um, you know, training, working each step. So, but we can't do everything, there's, I mean, there is limited funds, but we try really hard to meet at least something for everyone that they want to make happen, so.
And I think it's really important, we look at these projects, since the operations bucket is going to be smaller, we're looking at projects that are in that five to ten year range that are gonna have to be done, we know that are coming up. Um, and I know we're gonna pay a five percent interest on the bond, but we have to think those dollars today are worth more than they will be ten years from now. I mean, construction inflation is closer to ten percent, if not better. So doing as many of these projects now will actually be able to get more done today than we will five years or ten years from now with the same dollar.
And that's exactly, because what we've started looking at balancing was if we do this, you know, five million doesn't, you know, what does that complete? You know, one, one more HVAC project, and so you've got several variables to point while you're also trying to provide, you know, as a taxpayer, you, you want to have some things that you can visually see, not just things behind the wall that, you know, engineer, but then are also important to the operation scope that we know in five years are going to need to hit that anyway. But that's why we're also looking to try to balance, to not overobligate ourselves, um, to lessen too much of our pot in operations. Have that capacity still moving forward, which is why you're not seeing a forty million dollar, um, even though we have that capacity. It was one of those, we felt like that tipped it too much, so that's why we, you know, and you'll see that kind of gray line with the total. The other thing we keep in mind is a twenty million dollar issuance, as you can put these two together. You know, one point, uh, four of that is cost of issuances and, and soft costs that you just absorb in. That again is being conservative with that, so then what you do is, as that comes, you can either have a nut, you know, you can expand on something, or you can go down to your next, uh, checkpoint or next priority listing that you have. But we wanted to have the conversation because we want to make sure that this is representing what our board, what our community desires as well. Um, not just what our needs are from a facility standpoint, but our students' needs and the boards and, but the community. But based off of the, and I think this is in your, um, Jane Herndon provided this last time, um, this work session is great to talk through those, so we can kind of try to fine tune. Right now, we're projected just on this timeline, um, to have a board hearing to discuss the potential projects, which, you know, that's kind of what this list is intended for, the potential projects, and then also determine the maximum borrowing amounts, um, and then just to approve the notice of the hearing. So this meeting, I think, was the idea of, you know, taking a look at some of these projects, trying to find with all the information you were just provided, you know, to continue to narrow that scope a little bit. Um, so that when we take it to the hearing, we can have an idea of, you know, if, if all of a sudden it's, hey, it's twenty two million or whatever that value is, I'm just throwing a number. If you want additional information at that exact amount, we have time before the twenty fourth to make sure that we can provide you.
What when?
Uh, the, the twenty fourth, right now, but we, we.
Of January?
Of January, where we would deliver the notice on the nineteenth. Of January, where we would deliver the notice on the nineteenth.
I have a few questions. Um, this, so this debt issuance project for us is alphabetized and is prioritized, is that correct, right?
Um, so it's, what we've done.
Not prioritized?
No, that's not prioritized, no.
Okay.
It is alphabetized by building, so that I can agree them, so that I can make sure that we can't be non-controlled, yeah. And then, that's a, that's a good point.
It's more project type instead of project one.
Correct, and then this just brings, everything above that gray line up is on this matrix.
Okay.
If we move things up or down, or if you say, hey, we're gonna move this line to go to twenty two million, or move it up to eighteen million, or wherever you go with that. I will then update this matrix to make sure, because if you pull up something, say at the high school, that's four million dollars. That's going to take it to a controlled project, and it's going to be subject to referendum. So that's why we keep the matrix as you guys look at this project listing, so that we can make sure, cause I think it's the. Everybody's consensus to keep it non-controlled, correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, I think there's a space between the referendum and petition remonstrance, I think. The example you give would put us into the petition remonstrance.
That's correct, yes.
So that's, uh, uh, the twenty fourth is not the project hearing, it's just when they basically give, give, give the marching orders.
That's right.
Cause we can't legally advertise that.
Yes.
Between now and the twenty fourth.
You're correct, yes, the actual hearing went down the twenty fourth, it's just the next step to meet, to discuss and more finalize. We have that embedded for this, but we're utilizing this too before we get to that, so they, these are kind of the same type of. This is a lot of times what you would do at that hearing, but I think from hearing from the board until last time, we wanted to have an additional discussion time. As we narrow, uh, narrow down a little bit.
And then a few other questions, sorry. Um, the turf football field and the baseball field, fourteen fifteen. Those are parts here of the twenty million, but I thought that, are we just shifting those projects? Cause the money was already there for those, right, but now we're just shifting it to this, okay.
So, we passed, if you remember that, a resolution to reimburse. We passed that so that we have the option, where we can go ahead and front the money for that, to go ahead and get on the waiting list. So that it gets done before the football season, um, but we have the option to reimburse ourselves for that.
Okay, great, and then my final question, well, I guess, I, I mean, I see the Hibbert steam project on here, down, way down on the list. And I just really wish that was, I mean, that's kind of our way, we've brought in students into the district, and they don't. In my opinion, love to see it prioritized.
I, I can tell you a little bit about why it's where it is. So, the steam program is going to see some updates regardless of what we decide in this particular line item. The reason why it's reflected like this is because there are substantial improvements and updates required. Not desired at the Hibbert building. So, in order to create a full lab, um, without it, like. Without it being more of utilizing the current building in a different way. So, in order to re, like, to convert that pool area into a lab. It is going to cost us between eight and ten million dollars minimum, because there are substantial requirements needed to, to update the H V A C system. Which is why we closed the pool area in the first place, um, filling in the pool, getting the equipment needed to make that area what we want. We have to fix drainage issues in order to prevent any water problems when we redo this area. So, that cost being eight to ten million, if, and, and. I by no means have an opinion of this, I'm simply presenting the facts of what we could do. If we looked at a multipurpose type facility for that program. You could look at a fifteen million dollar brand new facility to utilize for a lab, or for whatever it is we make. So that's why I put it on there, because it is worth the conversation. We can choose to put the substantial sum needed into Hibbert, we can. It just might not solve all of the issues, and I continue to talk about it, I don't, I just, I know that it being so substantial a sum. And with that differential being what I would consider fairly minimal, considering you would have a brand new building. Um, now that is not saying you pick it up and you make it exactly what it is, and it's fifteen million, that would cost more. But to say we could have a multipurpose facility that could service the needs of what we do there. It could look a little different than what it does, and you couldn't do that for that, so, um. That's why it's where it is, the steam program, we already have a plan for improvements in that area and continuing that improvement. It just isn't in the space, uh, if we do that temporarily, it is not in that space without spending that amount of money. So, we do have a plan for continued improvements in that area and lab work and, and making it. Um, a, you know, a continued improvement of construction in that area. But to do the full package, it, it is substantially more in budget than what we had initially discussed, so we need to talk about it. That's why it's on this list. Um, everyone has full intention of continuing to improve that, that program and making sure that resources are. Um, developed and put for making that a lab environment, it is just that right now, we are, um. It's gonna look a little different than, than the pool area while we work through these details here.
Correct.
Continue to move forward and.
And I think knowing that we have another, you know, we have debt that's going to follow up the substantial, our first look was, how can we maximize the impact of this? Um, and then if that falls off, then that's the next high, high priority, we'll have, um, that capacity. At that time too, if it, because it is such a big, um, unbalanced receipt of a location.
And this scout. Sprinkling in a depth of history of what I have learned at Hibbert facility. Initially, had a roughly twenty to twenty five year shelf life, was built there in the late sixties. Was supposed to be demolished and Hibbert was supposed to be rebuilt, uh, with the addition of current C R. It was also supposed to be demolished and rebuilt in the middle of football field, that didn't occur, there was before that, that, uh, Robert, Robert shared, you know. Inact, but point being, as scout, we have facilities that, um, as may join them. And we're a point which, to which you said, it's not necessarily, um, a. Want, it's, it's a necessity of this, this, we need to have guidance and instruction, because it is going to determine and dictate. Other decisions and other factors, uh, for which, uh, Karen.
Was there any thought given, kind of picking up on what Jamie said, to do something that people can see and appreciate? Uh, an elevator in Civic Hall Performing Arts Center has been an issue that has been with us since we have Civic Hall Performing Arts.
Yeah, so I would say that it's not just civic, it's tier nine as well, so location is everything, right? So, um, I believe that I added. The elevator. My forty seven, so, um. So, um, yes, I would agree with you, Ron, it is something that comes up very frequently, it's something that, um. You know, we are doing, we are doing fine with what we have, but we are gonna have to replace that elevator at some point. Um, and it might be worth looking at, possible updates at that time, that would provide other areas benefit as well. Uh, so it's something that I put on, um, it's something that as we grow, I know that this is something that's important, and you will see it. Um, in a few areas, um, you will see special education updates and I D A needs, and as those progress and change. That's something that we need, need to consider, um, our population is, um, substantially higher than our neighbors. So it's something that we have to consider, that maybe perhaps others don't have quite the level of, um, in percentage of need. We'll see some of those things noted, I would say that elevators also, that in a positive way. So, um, that's just something, our elevators are very aged, they are very well maintained. They are all passing exit inspection just fine, in light colors, um, however, they are getting older. And so I just know that eventually they are gonna have to look for replacement, and that's just a reality, so. I just, I added that to the list, cause it is substantial sum, so thank you, and I appreciate you pointing that out.
That's a good example, though, they, we all say, okay, let's move that elevator up on, on the list. That would take the high school above that threshold to seven to four, so that, that's why I keep this, um, so that we can maintain. That equity balance too for the non-controlled.
And that's where, like, example, that is where Kristen said the money is already there for something, if we did have to shift that. We would just have to know that that has to come out of that allocated resource, so that's some, because it's already been a project that has been improved. So, that, that's good, that is important for us to know now, so that we can build that right.
Well, then we've talked about in the past too, um, the last bond and projects we did, that included like the bleachers and things like that. As we talk about upgrading the locker room facilities, that tariff center, because. When they were built, they've got the big, um, community showers in it, kids today do not use them, they're stored more than anything. We'd like to redo that, where they were like individualized, like three or four showers in there, you know, private curtains. Where kids will actually use them when needed, um, and we really re, reworked athletic, athletic, uh, locker room areas or use their.
So, we did get that price, we got lockers priced a couple of years ago, and at the time, it was between seventy five and a hundred thousand dollars to do. Um, the, the main locker rooms, um, that did not include restroom updates, restroom updates, if we touch them. Um, we have to make them ADA compliant, so that's something that would change the scope of those as well. Um, does impact size a lot of what's available to be done, so, um, I believe I have restroom updates on here as well. So, um, the locker.
Number twenty three, yeah.
Issues are here, um, so, but that will not cover that, I will just be honest. That is strictly for facelifts, the two hundred thousand is what, um, it's just a facelift on, um. So, just to put it in perspective, the honors hall restroom, um, cost us almost two hundred thousand dollars. So that's just so that you know if you're gonna do total, a total redo. Um, that's what you're looking at, now that split that restroom and made it a boys' and a girls' restroom, so it wasn't a substantial change, but, um. But that's kind of relativeness, it's important for you guys to just have some form of relative information, but I would, I would agree, the locker rooms. Um, are something that we would like to, I would say it is a, a desire, and it is something that would be nice, for sure. Um, it is not, it does not come about a pretty significant price tag, but it, it would be nice to do, yes.
I do think, um, that's something that we would probably need to add is, um. Restrooms to the middle schools and high schools, um.
That you do.
Yep, um, and that probably. Needs to be added to.
So, what you're saying is we need to increase the amount.
A lot of schools are adding.
Like a single stall.
Single stall restroom.
Like on each floor.
That's a, that's a very.
Um, I have a few questions, I'm sure, so, uh, first, the facility plans, this is dated for ten years.
Correct, we do a ten year plan, because.
It really looks like it's just the next year and two, so, I don't, I mean, it, it's.
Okay, let's talk about it.
I don't really wanna go through it piece by piece.
I just wanted to tell you why it's a ten year plan, and that way you can understand that.
I have some more questions.
That's fine, but are they related to this, cause I'd like to.
That was my only point on that.
So, let's get here, and then we'll go to the next one, can we do that while we're on this, so that we don't have to bounce back and forth?
I'm not coming back.
I know, but that's where I wanna answer it now, cause you don't wanna come back to it, but I would like the opportunity to talk about it, since you have a question, am I permitted to do that at this time? You got a question? It is a ten year plan, because you see roofs, we have to do roofs every year. It's to have information on asphalt, it has information on H V A C, and the way we have to do air handles, we have to do B A Cs, those do not pass to asphalt. Um, there is a list, it does not mean that it's a three year plan, there are notes when they are within the three year plan, that's why I'll say twenty twenty four. And that's why I would say twenty twenty five, these things cannot all occur within three years, so that's why it's a ten year plan. This is. This is very relative to ten years worth of work, because this list. Even though we need it right now, this list has contained a lot of these items for a really long time. And so, it's updated every year to include new things that we didn't know at the time. However, these things, it, it may take us ten years to do some of this, so that's why it is a ten year plan, it truly is. And I, it's, but it is something that, um, is not just for three years. The three years are marked intentionally, so that you know what's in that three year plan of the budget that has to be turned into the D L G F. So that's, I just wanted to understand this. If you want it in a different format, happy to do that, but, um, that's how this one works, what's your next question?
Um, so, there was some reference to softball fields and said, we've, we've still not really seen an overall facilities plan. It doesn't seem like there's enough money to move the tennis courts here, or to build new. Facilities, um, I don't know where we are with that, I'm not really asking where we're at, I just wanted to point it out, that it doesn't seem like we're. Progressing with the correct amount of dollars.
Well, this, okay, so the original McBride budget was for annual costs of so much. And we were gonna do them in segments of time, if you recall that part of it. This is to assist in that budgetary need, so it won't fund all of McBride, the three hundred thousand is just a portion of it. Because we felt like that was, we have so many other needs, it was a responsible amount to utilize. We could load that, but the other part of it is, you have to hit your six million of high schools. Or with athletics, there are, there are categories, so it is in, if you look at this matrix. Can you look at number sixteen on the project list, it has tennis court, seven hundred thousand dollars. So, that's covered in both of these areas, the other part.
New courts.
What?
Is that new courts at any location?
So, yeah, because if we're going to redo them, we probably need to move them. Um, so that we don't have the same water issue that we currently have, because it's going to have a problem, as long as it stays there, we're gonna have to. Three to four years, minimum, how long does tennis, I don't know, how long does tennis court resurfacing, like the. Turf is ten, twelve years, I don't, how long is a standard resurfacing for? It's usually five at the worst case, um, we have to do ours either every year or every two right now. And it's about forty five to fifty five thousand dollars every time we do it.
Is that seven hundred just to deal with the tennis courts, but not the space that's left there once they're gone?
I think we embedded.
Bus drop off, rerouting, and I'm guessing that's an asphalt too.
It is an asphalt, that's why asphalt is on here like three or four times, because it's to be determined based on scope, because asphalt is expensive. And if we do about a million dollars worth, we're probably just looking at one parking lot over there. So, um, it's just, it's crazy expensive when you look at the costs to resurface. Okay, so softball though was a part of the McBride budget, and so that is planned. Um, this year primarily at McBride, we are going, just due to timing, we haven't closed yet, we don't have closing date, but we expect it to be soon. Um, we have to get the field in good condition to, for play this year, of those, there's some safety things we need to fix for, for, um. For people that come and support, and that way, um, others can utilize the field of some as well. And so, that's, we have those as our priority this year, and then, you know, if we can get softball moved at the same time, that's definitely a goal. That's a concern I have, it's just that, um, it's gonna take a lot of, of work and great timing. To pull all of that off in this year, so we have goals, it's just all about.
Um, moving on, it'd be nice to kind of see what projects remain in the capital operations fund, um. I know we've, we've tried to get to that twenty million dollar number, um, I guess. I think some of these, I know it's a math problem, but, uh, some of these were more routine items. I kind of would like this, maybe stay out of debt issuance and pursue. Um, I think it's super important at this point, if we're gonna go in, I think. Um I think it's super important at this point, if we're gonna go in, I think the Hibbert should be a priority and on the list, I think uh.
Thanks, Alex.
I think that plus fifteen million if what it is, I mean, if I'm gonna borrow thirty million dollars. I mean, I guess like Ron, I want something to show for it. And so um I think in 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 looking at how we divide, and I know we're trying to get more, but a million and a half dollars a year funding. But uh but really like us to see more than just kind of delayed regular maintenance and stuff. Um I, I don't know exactly how that breaks out, but uh.
Okay, so I can just, I I agree with you, I'm not a super huge fan of lots of debt and you know that. The one thing that I will say is. You know, I'm gonna even have that, I I've not worked with you guys too long, you know that. So the one thing about when you see HVAC, the tennis project has to be done.
Yeah.
We won't have any dehumanification in that building. Um we have to figure out a way, the one thing about it is I need to change that scope. Um there's some issues with it that um I have got to fix while we're doing it. Because like I, I do not want to have to do it three times, and so we need to just do it um and get it done. The other thing is that some of the delayed maintenance has gotta be fixed because we are putting routine maintenance dollars in it every single year. That to actually fix it and finish it and do it means we don't have that cost. And so efficiencies and good resource management means that we do that. We don't just do, and and I am all about like things that you can see and do. There needs to be a balance to it, there is a lot of this that asphalt's very boring, but it's super impactful to our staff. It's super impactful to our community and super impactful to those that that come and use our facilities. So even though it sounds really boring, it's really nice to have a nice parking lot, it's really nice to be able, I mean uh it, the staff says thank you when things get resurfaced, like it's very noticeable and it is, it is a positive. Um playgrounds are the same way, they're not, they don't seem fancy. But when you redo them, the community, I mean, they use them, our playgrounds are used nearly every night. So there are things that um that do make a big intact that may not be as much money when you look at the dollars and the cents, however, we can do it however we want. If Hibbert is that, that, that area that we wanna do, that's fine, we just need to know that.
So the one thing that we need to decide, it would take it to a controlled.
It would, so we have trouble with that, and maybe that's where, that's why we put it on a list when we look at twenty-eight, twenty-nine. We can look at that.
A one project for that, so that if it is controlled, it's just that one project that's getting, that's held. And then it's easier, I think, for those types of things to go to.
It's important to remember the, the top shaded area on those graphs. Uh may not have meant a lot to you, but it's your capacity.
Yeah.
And is that gap widens, and that shaded area widens as it will, as that rolls off. There's the potential for another project, it could very well be a controlled project referendum. I guess I would have two concerns as you look at this that I think you need to be aware of. If nothing else, then just worry about it, I don't know if you think you too about it. And that is, A, these, we're dealing with estimated figures. B, as Pete noted earlier, construction industry inflation is is significant. Don't mean to put Kevin on the spot, but I have some concern depending on the intensity of contracting in some of these trades, whether our market, our our labor market can support it. And I don't know, you're seeing, you see it better than I do obviously, but that's a concern I have.
Reality, I I can be the reality even if the lower end of order, just wherever we see it right now. What's our out there in the world we can do, so I don't know that. I don't, I think it exists even if I'm lowering, even if you're a ten second, you're gonna struggle with that.
My name is Mr. McCurdy and uh Mr. Bozer, as you like, in our work session uh format, you're more than welcome to take seats here at the stage. So if you're coming for your day, but the seats are open to you.
But that, that, that is a good point too, because there's been an infusion with the Esser dollars, which is really, you know, has has.
And there's a time limit on.
And there's a time limit on that, to the point though, even there's been many of us that are are telling them, what are you going to do? Because we can, we have, it's it's reimbursable funds and we're obligating ourselves and we can't help. So they are actually finally talking about waivers that they can issue. That makes me still very nervous when you're talking about over obligating ourselves millions of dollars.
Dollars have to be spent twenty-four in capital in twenty-five.
So they're looking at waivers for the Esser to get us past that uh time period, but they are set to expire in twenty-four.
I've just got a couple questions, uh do the figures include like a ten percent contingency? Does that, is that allowed within the bonding process?
Yes.
And and if we've already included that.
Um and so.
Because twenty million just is a
Right.
A nice round number, I mean, if it ends up being twenty-two, it's what it is. But I don't, I would rather, even with contingencies coming out of the bond, instead of us a year or two years from now going, uh we gotta find two million dollars.
Yeah, and one thing that I will say is that in, in some cases, yes. So like you will see controls at Dennis alongside that Dennis HVAC piece. I allow for some of that in the control that would cover because it needs to be done as a part of it, if we're gonna do it. Um some of it though, you would read, like you wouldn't, when you build that, you're gonna build some extra projects in funds allowed because you don't know until you bid it what that's gonna look like. So you'll reduce a project that maybe, you know, you can, which is why some of that um we've tried to build a little high in what um what we are planning, um the items in it. So like a playground, you can choose your pieces of equipment. I would go after a matching grant because the company that we utilize for our playgrounds most often has a matching grant. That will fund up to like a match of seventy-five thousand dollars. So you do that to maximize what you get out of it, but we would reduce the number of pieces if there's not quite enough to cover the the soft costs associated with that to have a contingency. One thing that I will note, because you hear it a lot on a high school project, there was no contingency written. So everything's a change order, that's an add. We had money set aside in the bond to cover that um intentionally, but it wasn't written into the project. When we write contracts in the future, I've already had this conversation with Mr. McCurdy. We're gonna try to write either a percentage or a limited number so that we already have it built in. So that you don't have to always see those change orders that are adds, adds, adds. It's already part of the budget, the maximum budget on that project. So yes, but I've also known that some of these projects are able to be shifted a little in order to compensate for that.
Right.
Um and you maybe just don't do, like this whole piece, you do this whole piece. And so y- yes, and I mean, these are very.
I I I would just like the ten percent contingency, if we have a.
Yes.
Yeah, I I I have a pretty strong feeling about that because it from experience.
I do too.
I totally, I totally agree, I totally agree you need the contingency built in. But you build it into your project budget, you don't put it in the contract because it's, it's almost a use it or lose it mentality sometimes.
Yeah, and and that is somewhat embedded too within some of the um because I think you build it into the, the, the budget to to Mr. Cross's point. We also build in some contingency a little bit within those soft costs, cost of that issuance too with trying to overstate uh like the, the rate, if it's go, if it's at a four percent, we're budgeting for a five percent. If it's um even, so those are the types of things how we can embed it on the finance side as these numbers could fluctuate.
And I got a question for uh Mr. McCurdy since he's under contract now and has been through our schools properly professionally. As many, as much as anybody. What projects are we missing on here? Cause you, you've been through our schools as much or more than any professional.
I guess can I back up, put maybe a pen, a little more detail on Ron's question or comment maybe in terms of capacity? Cause I think this relates to value proposition of what you're doing. I mean, I think the reality is when you're talking about doing, I get, let me back up even from this. The approach I have seen is let's take five million dollars and carve it into twenty projects. That's not your highest value proposition here. Your highest value proposition is gonna be kind of the approach you're taking now of what's the biggest bite of that apple we can take.
Correct.
And I think that's gonna mean to Ron's point, your local contractors are probably not gonna be able to do that. That's just the reality. So it's gonna be somebody of a bigger construction management company that's coming in and tackling the project, not projects. I mean, you're not gonna break it up the way you have historically been doing if you wanna get the most value out of it. Because you're paying higher overhead profit on these smaller little bites you're taking out of a thirty million dollar apple than if you just say it's a thirty million dollar pie, here it is, let's go figure out how to get that done. So I think sometimes you get into that rope-a-dope a little bit, the way you've kind of historically done things on a shoestring that then diminish what you're able to accomplish in that approach. So my recommendation would be to look at, if you're gonna say I wanna take a bigger bite, let's rethink how we're taking that bigger bite.
But I think that the thing, because I I agree, um especially the shoestring part. Um but for example, if we said tonight, do Hibbert. My concern with that is Hibbert is not impacting the operation. We're going to take a hit to the operations where you're not offsetting enough expense to lose that circuit breaker. So if you just did Hibbert with this issuance of fifteen million, it's, it, it's not gonna free up that operational money to embed that circuit breaker loss.
Without putting anybody under undue pressure. It it almost seems obvious to me, and I think Jamie alluded to it earlier, Hibbert is a standalone project for future times.
I agree.
Is that the administrative?
Yes, but what can we get away with not doing? Because a lot of stuff needs to be done to Hibbert, and those are the easiest programs to move somewhere. And maybe it's just a question of
Well, and that's.
Where can we move them temporarily and then Hibbert just goes away? Like maybe that's.
Yeah. Something that people can talk about, you know, around this table and how further, that's the other part that um and that's why it's on this, this the way that it is, because we have to have that conversation.
Yeah.
Um the other part is just for Pete's knowledge, Kevin and I meet every other week at least and talk maybe like four times a week or more.
It's been a bit of a break with the holidays, but.
Yes, a bit, um so one thing that we did from the very start was we started rethinking how we look at projects and how we look at our facilities. And um so this is a work with Kevin, it is not a, a, I mean, you know, I see things every day. I will say that I have a lot of opinions, what should be priority on this list, just simply from the maintenance cost or the efficiency thing, Kevin has his own opinions about that as well. Single principal has an opinion, every department head has, every teacher that this would impact would have an opinion. But exactly, but this list was truly, I mean, it was a coordinated work. Um Kevin, this is not gonna shock Kevin, this list isn't gonna shock him because it's also for the most part that we've talked about. Or it's things that my maintenance team, like I went through this with my maintenance team and said, alright, you guys know what we're hitting all the time, so this was not just a me work. It's something, I feel like we get the best work when we work as a team. And so that's one thing that I do wanna give them credit because um it was an interesting conversation because some of them were very aware, we are putting tons of money into this. If we just fix it, we would save all, like we've spent it five times over. Some things on that list reflect this, and that's where, you know, and when I think that's probably the first conversation I had with Kevin was I have, I mean, we really need to look at this different. And so, I mean, I, I have opinions on not just Hibbert, on some options that we need to talk about or could talk about that as we look in future planning, but they're not ones that would be pertinent to tonight. And so there are things that we'll talk about in the future, um just ideas or options or things we can play with and just see um as we plan. But I mean.
And I don't think we need to be afraid necessarily of a controlled project because. We have experience with that, that was, when we last, did our last lease financing the test. We, it was a petition remonstrance project, there was nothing.
I guess that's where I'm at, why wouldn't we?
If it's a need you have, I mean, I think it's a need you have.
Can I just weigh in real quick, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no at all, no, of course.
Just the Hibbert thing, I just wanna put a little finer point on this. It was, it's been mentioned a couple of times and it was kind of alluded to, but I'll be a little more specific about it with the big throwaway building. Because I think that's what happened on the same project, is we started to say what's it gonna take to really do this right? You know, I made the comment, I think to Karen, that, you know, in my office, the wall sections are showing like a four-inch masonry wall. And I'm like, that can't be right, go back and look at the drawings, no, it's a four-inch masonry wall. So you're throwing really good money at that all of a sudden when you start looking at that building. And I think, in my opinion, then based on that experience, we need to be looking a little more intentionally then. Where are you investing those dollars and are certain buildings worth continuing to put money in? And I don't think that's been the case unfortunately, because I think some of that's gotten lost to history that, no, it really was built as a throwaway building. I mean, that's not a euphemism, it was truly built so poorly that you're replacing lentils in the building, you know, over windows and doors that are failing. So those I think are the realities when I think of like, what are the big things? If I was to make a big scale recommendation to you all sitting in those seats is to look at that level before you start saying, is this mechanical system right? Let's back up, is that building even the right place to put dollars? Or is it needn't be, that building to your question about where's the big move? Is the big move, you know, this building or that building or whatever it is, shouldn't be thought about as a repair. It really needs to be a replacement because of the historical condition it's currently in.
I think the board's ahead of you.
Do great.
You, you're preaching to the choir.
No, but I, I, it's been some things that I've, I've kind of, it's saying some transitions have happened, like some of that's gotten lost a little bit. New board members probably, I just think bringing that perspective back to the front.
We have six hundred thousand budgeted, we can put more money into Hibbert right now, plus what you said in addition to that, so.
Yeah, and then.
But it's just when the question came up about why aren't we doing that, that's the driver, so I'm, I'm addressing that even if it's.
So but do we even need to keep that six hundred thousand dollar line for landscaping or water?
Yeah, well, it, yeah, it just depends on what you wanna talk about and how you wanna talk.
Seems to me like.
Have you changed the car pick-up line before I did landscaping?
But no, it's not landscaping, it's so that water doesn't come in buildings.
I've got it, yeah.
It's, it's actually not pretty, we're gonna make it pretty when we do it if we do it, but it's so that there's not water.
But my, yeah, the original point is so, so I, I mean, I don't really I don't know why you wouldn't run two fifteen million dollar, I don't know, have your general maintenance fifteen million and run your Hibbert fifteen million. I mean, not the same, but side by side, and then you can have your controlled Hibbert project standalone. And then you can have your, your operations, debt options standalone, and you're really asking for thirty million. I mean, that's where I'd like to be, I'd like to get them both done now.
But do you think Hibbert, I mean, it, it's so shitty in the way it's going backwards, but you know Baxter's the same thing. I think I mentioned that.
Well, Hibbert's a program that draws student stars, yes.
Right, but Baxter needs a lot of work and it's not a neighborhood school, so.
But Baxter's work is very different, Baxter's is strictly HVAC for the most part, and it's a true system. The building isn't in the same shape.
Okay.
It's a better building.
It's actually a true system that needs to be repaired, so that's where you can see that difference. Now, you know, as things age or, I mean, I have opinions on our almond trees. Like what I would love to see us do with our almond trees looks very different than maybe what somebody else might think. Um but I think those are future conversations as we like, I, I love that we can actually have this conversation because um it's something that, you know, we've not been here for a while and a, being able to talk about. So um but yes, so that's where you see some heavy money, but some of it is strictly.
That's good to know, that's, especially if it's like, if we do this, we're good.
Yeah.
Versus if we do this, we still have.
Exactly. And really, um. Hibbert is our worst building right now for that. Um, we do have some other buildings that we probably need to discuss, but it's not at that level. There are things we definitely can do better for efficiencies and and um streamlined maintenance. There are things that, I mean, I'm gonna. Kevin and I have been working on streamlining a lot of things that we do when we have systems. We're gonna buy. We are specifically, I mean, we've talked about it so much, I mean, I'm not going to shock him. We're gonna buy specific systems that our team can maintain with similar parts that are matching other buildings because it's efficient. It makes sense. It is good for right now. Um, my HVAC technician is so overwhelmed. We will have three separate systems at Dennis when this project is done. That is not okay with me because one person managing that times fourteen buildings is just. It's not even physically possible. So what we, what I proposed is that we clean that up. And we try to get these these things back in an order in which we choose what we want. It's not always like. There's a very important part to bidding that Ron points out every time we bid. It is lowest, most reasonable and responsive. If we specifically request a certain type of equipment that we can maintain and manage that matches our equipment. The high school is a perfect example. The system at the high school is a really great product. Once we get it all done and put to bed, we may stick with that product as we move into other buildings. Because when you maintain the same type of products, it's easier to do. And it costs less because you can get a maintenance agreement for it. And then they already are providing service or they're providing some parts and supplies. So this, this is just a part of my effort plan that I've been, I mean, and and Kevin has helped with that. Because he's been able to share with me things he's seen over the years while it's worked with us. That, you know, I I can definitely jump in on super quick. And then, you know, hearing from my team at maintenance department, all of the frustrations that they have. Lines up with what Kevin is seeing and it's just, we are going to get to a really good place. It's just going to take us some time to get there.
So could you give us, oh, sorry. Sorry, I thought.
No, you don't.
So could you give us some ideas, you guys, uh? What would we be looking at if um we were to replace the Hibbert building? I mean, are we talking about like building somewhere on site there? Are we talking about utilizing other property? Are we talking about what are, what are some things that you guys have? I'm assuming there's been some brainstorming.
So, yeah, I I I do, yeah, and I do lots of brainstorming in my own head too. So, yeah, we've talked about. I mean, we've talked about either do you do almost a identical type environment building? What does that look? It is far more expensive than what you look at if you look at a multipurpose facility. So the idea is you have. Maybe it's partially classroom environment. You have a gym or two because Mr. Bolser and I are having fun trying to find places for everybody, mostly him. Um, but, you know, making. It is a good problem to have, but we have a very active youth program right now that we want to continue. Does that mean? We partner? I don't know. Um, does it mean that that facility is is different than a school only? Maybe it's, you know, it's got some area for um. For, I I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pine this guy in here, you know. A workout facility that then is, you know, is an ability that the athletic department can utilize for some, you know, off season work during the after minutes after school. There are options we can do with a multipurpose facility. It doesn't have to be a brick school. It can function as a school building. If you look at. Facilities around the state, they're changing. They are very, um, and and Mr. McCurdy has worked on quite a few like. He's working on a project, well, I think you're done now, right, in Noblesville, but it's beautiful, but it's a totally different concept on a library. A school is exactly the same way. You do a totally, it doesn't have to look like what we're used to. It doesn't have to look like. The same thing.
I I think a guiding principle has to be that. Program drives facilities, facilities do not drive program.
Right.
And I mean, I would agree. I I think, I mean, we're far enough along as a society that Hibbert, a a new building can be built. To to do what we want today, which would be steam classrooms, but also have the flexibility to evolve. Into what ten years from now, so that building is not locked into a a grid pattern or whatever. Um, and I think I'm, I don't know, I've not really been in in your side of the business for a long time, but. I'm guessing with some creativity and there's probably already units that look at the place that you can. Can have a facility that can can evolve. Uh. And change with our needs. Meeting the needs currently, but also anticipating future needs of what that space could look like. I mean, if we continue to lose students, we may be at thirty five hundred schools, you know, in ten, twenty years. How does that building fit into that?
And I think to to sort of answer that. Or maybe respond to that as well as the previous question was. There's been some conversation about could it be built up on the hill? That was always the plan. See, it can stay in operation. You build up on the hill, take that down, awful lot of water issues suddenly go away from out at the bottom of the hill, which doesn't make a lot of sense. Then there was talk about, you know, does that programmatically get added on to some other facility you have? I think at the end of the day, to Ron's point, I mean, I think it has to be answered operationally. What is the new building even need to be or look like? And then ultimately like. Is that operationally a short term, a long term, a ten year set until we, you know, as long as we can foresee? And how do we want to make that building potentially adaptable to something else? I do think you run the risk of when you try to make it work for potentially everything, it becomes good for nothing.
Yeah.
So you do have to draw a line somewhere in the sand, but I agree a hundred percent. It's operationally driven. By where do you see yourself in that five year tanker range? But I think there are things we can do to help that out.
And if steam is, I mean, I'd love to see the current building busting at the seams and I think that's where the future is. Is is alternative creative education. And so how we get there, I don't know.
And that's where if you know, you're you as a board are saying, you know, this kind of magnet idea, be that steam, art, whatever that is. I mean, that's that's obviously one concept. It's gonna be drive things differently than we are in middle school or we are, you know, that that does everything within a middle school. But I think that's a question that would have to be answered before I can tell you. What the final result is.
Yeah.
I think where this came from again, just backing up was. Holy smokes, this is getting to be a big number. Is this really what we want to do in a building that probably should have been replaced many moons ago? And then we kind of didn't go a whole lot further in depth, frankly.
Thanks. But maybe, but maybe it is something we'd look and roll it into like a whole middle school, like that's where all the middle school athletics are because they're all kind of split. Right? Like Hibbert kids, they either go test or they go to Dennis for sports and we're trying to have this feeder like if we have a. Attach it to Dennis, put in test track, you know, just like.
It is possible. Yeah, that's the thing. Like, we didn't get too far into planning because we wanted to have the conversation. And we, I mean, it it's something, you know, but the one thing that I found when we looked at steam. It was a little bit backwards. It was really hard on Kevin and I'm gonna be real, it was really hard. It's programmatically, we just said steam. Steam can be a lot of stuff. So what programmatically matters the most that we need to do in that space? Now, um, we. Kind of got there, but if we are looking at a build, that becomes even more important at the very beginning. Because we we unwheels for a while because we couldn't figure out what. It meant something different to every single person when we met and when we talked to people. No, it was really hard for me to tell him, this is your direction. Let's go.
Yeah.
Because it was so circular, it changed every other day.
Well, I do think it's location too for that building for for that those programs there.
Yeah.
Cause they do get out and they do things and they, they walk to places and where Hibbert is.
And we were trying, you were trying to back a program into a building that wasn't built for that. So even trying to do that, you were handicapping the program from day one in the way it was being thought about. Because you, yeah, the pool area was a big open space, but then it's like you're trying to back everything else into this kind of sales and belts mentality of a building. It didn't make a lot of sense programmatically, like trying to accomplish. And then add on to that again, what a. Broken record now that it's a building that you really want to save it frankly. Cause the dollars you're gonna put into trying to save. I'm all for using a building that's got good bones. It just doesn't have good bones to start with, so.
So maybe I wait for Pete, Jamie to come back or maybe it's my question was, what number makes the most sense? Like. We have all these projects.
That's right.
Like, you know, the threshold of. Fifteen or twenty or thirty, like what is there a sweet spot on any of those numbers? I don't.
I I think that the key is whether it's controlled or not controlled. And I think that, you know, for this issuance, it may be we stay up not controlled and then we look at intentionally. You know, we're, we're looking at twenty eight, you know, twenty seven, twenty eight, twenty. You could stagger some stuff. So we don't have to make a hundred percent of everything. Because this is much more than thirty. Wait, I'll be real, this is a whole lot more than thirty. Um. But yeah, it's all, it's about comfort level for tax rate, comfort level for your total amount you want to take in that. And it's about what projects do you want to do within that level? And so I think that that's just the, and that's why we offered you so many things that need done. Because it all needs done in my book, like all of it. And and there's more than this, but. Reasonably looking at what needs to be done, you know, first above things. This is the list. So and and some of those things down below are just as important. We were just hitting target numbers based on original conversations. So. It's just up to you guys now. You need to tell us the way you want to go so that we can. Make a plan from that point forward. And if it's, we want it to be this with a couple of options we can talk about next time, we can do that. But we do need to narrow it.
And just to give you a little more proof of thought, if you all have mine, ask the Mr. Bowser, join the table with us to uh share a few ideas he's had. Yeah, two ideas that he might as well make an all scheme.
Ron, did you have something?
I I I guess to to the point, where's the sweet spot? And I talked to Jane Hurd in a little bit about this, but she's she can speak for herself. I don't mean to be speaking for her, but. I think I would have some concern. About a school corporation our size facing the demographic. We face with the enrollment experience we've had. Going out with a thirty million dollar uncontrolled project. I just see. I just see that's going to draw some attention and what that means, I have no idea what it means, but I just think. It's potentially problematic.
I would echo that.
Well, and and I think whatever, to that point, I mean, whatever the level is, knowing the demographic here, I think it's kind of the, what is the story here that you're telling and what are you solving with what you're doing? I think you kind of be super clear about that. Cause I think if it's a lot of behind the wall stuff, I mean, people are gonna be like, what is wrong with you all? I mean, that's just the reality of projects.
But to Hibbert and to give people, I mean, people are flustered with the schools in many areas. And I mean. It's like building a choice school in your district. I mean, it's given another option. I mean, we we talk so little about education at these meetings anymore. But you know, as a parent. I mean. I think what we're, we started with baby steps with the steam program and I think we're still in that infancy. But I think that's the that's the future I'd like to offer the citizens is. Kids that can come here and have a different experience than six hours in a classroom. And I mean, I I just think that's that's what we have to do because because with choice, I mean. There's, there's too many options now and there's only going to be more. And so to uh to get ahead of this and to try to have something that's really unique and innovative. And meets the needs of our our kids, you know, we we talked about shop last time and that can be rolled into this facility in in a way.
So Dr. Wright, the reason that he had me come up here for the longest time, I've. I said, uh, that that one of the biggest obstacles that we have is that all of our facilities. No matter how creative we are with our educational process, we are still. In a place where we love the history of our buildings. And we don't ever want to lose that. But on the other hand, we're fitting. Everything that we're trying to be creative and give a new experience into old facilities. And so the integrity of that continues to. You know, we either reduce the project. Like, and make it a difficult situation or it's a patchwork. It's a patchwork build and that's the difficulty to it. So I think. I mean, I, when I came into this, I I did put together a. A facilities plan and my hope was always along that we would end up with this property. And I put together a slideshow with this. With what my vision of it was. And part of that had to do with a multi-use facility that incorporated classroom space. It it incorporates. Multiple gym space that allows for cross-the-board use. And then we as a corporation. Fit our, fit the building into the programs and the vision we're trying to produce. And obviously my dad was the principal of Hibbert and that building was a mess when he was the principal there. And. It's, it's, you know, we're, we are having a difficult time with um. Trying to put teams in different places and. And as much as I love the Tierney Center, the Tierney Center is a really difficult place to schedule. Because you have. Four gym spaces with a track that runs halfway through every one of them. So no team can actually use the entire facility. For a full practice situation. And with it being renovated, it's, it has created situations where now the new bleachers come out farther. And eliminates some of the. Different sport activities upstairs, uh, so like volleyball standards can't go in on certain courts. Um, so I think it's important that, that as you do it. We do look for the the biggest bang for the buck. Um, and I would be all about working on that.
And I I do want to go back to John, what you said earlier. I mean, I sat this morning and watched kids from Stivers. I don't know if anybody's familiar with that over in Dayton. I mean, that's kind of their art school. I saw more pride in those kids and I've seen. Really from any kids around here. My daughter's in high school, so I should, you know, attest to kind of what I see on a regular basis and. That was inspirational to me. And to me, that's like, what, how do we do that kind of stuff, you know, with whatever we are doing and kind of setting that tone for. A level of investment like that, again, rolling back into Ron's comment. I mean, I think it's gotta be. Moves that are significant like that where the community says, yes, we are investing in ourselves and our kids in a way. That that is, you know, that moving. Because otherwise it is going to be a what, what are you doing now exactly? Because there's been a lot of dollars, you know, I've been part of those projects that have been spent, you know, some I haven't and it, you know, I sit here and wonder what are we really doing sometimes with those dollars?
I have a question, don't kill me. Um, yes, we talked about the history and, you know, when I was like thinking about this and looking through it. It is hard because I think it's, you know, test, Dennis and high school, right? If you. We're never going to tear down a high school. No one's gonna want to get rid of tests and Dennis. But. It's obviously created issues with like district boundaries and like trying to figure out fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth and like. Has that ever been a conversation about one big new middle school as one big project? Because that houses everything, which I feel like fulfills the need of. Richmond getting back to, you know, starting in kindergarten and like, you know, being involved in things and sports and getting out and. A more cohesive learning environment. I just wanted to ask that question. Because yeah, it's like you don't, you don't want to get rid of those. Buildings, um, but. Because yeah, it's like you don't, you don't wanna get rid of those buildings, um, but.
Well, the way that I, I so, I'm gonna throw something out that, because we're talking about options, right? And it's not just middle schools, so our elementarys were all built within a ten-year window in the sixties. We had huge population growth, there was absolutely, like, I think we had twenty-four buildings um, up until like the early nineties. Um, so that's ten more buildings than we have right now. With that, our elementarys, so there, a few years ago, there was this like thing that came out. I don't know if it was just in some magazine or somebody like thought they were super smart said it, I don't know, but there was. Conversation that the elementary level, there's a sweet spot in the number of students that then provide you with a number of classrooms. That then provide you with team building, that provides you with curricular options at an elementary level. So we're, it's not even just middle school that we probably need to think about the use of our buildings. Because if they were built in the sixties, they are now sixty years old or more. And we're going to have to have conversations about the utilization of our buildings and what it looks like in the future. It it's just, then it's a natural conversation that other districts have very frequently, they, they do, you know. Whether that looks like, you know, maintaining neighborhood schools, maybe it's combining some neighborhood schools and building some bigger buildings. That do more or have more flexibility like John said, I mean, the education world changes so often and so fast. How do we best keep up so that we give our students the opportunities to be proud of what we do? And to see that they're walking into places that are, um, you know, current and up to date and moving with them. So I think that, I I mean, I actually hope that we can have this conversation because it. It's been a long time since we've been able to just have a thought, I mean, every, like, everyone. You know, everyone has opinions, but we have to be realistic in how we use our resources and so.
Ron, I have a question, have you ever seen a controlled project and a non-controlled projec- project run simultaneously?
No, I think, I have to ask Jane, I think, you know, it's a little bit of the apple poisons the whole.
And that's the other thick gray, I agree, um.
What's that mean, I don't understand.
When you say fifteen or fifteen.
It means, I don't know.
Can't, you said it poisons it, how does it poison it?
Well, I mean, it bring, it dr- it drags it all into a controlled status. Once you, once you've had your project hearing, you define the scope, define the project. Okay, so.
So they, because they're so close in proximity, they're combined.
They're combined to a control.
Like phase one, phase two.
You can't have faces, right, type of thing and because it, then it's a uh.
But even if they're clearly defined from the gadgets.
Contiguous project, you have to kind of keep the clarity.
You can artificially divide the project to avoid the control process.
But if you have the fifteen million dollar Hibbert project as controlled.
That's, if there is a fifteen million dollar Hib- Hibbert project, that would.
Running standalone.
I can ask that.
Running side by side to fifteen million dollar operation levy. What can you do?
That would have to be as on debt, debt insurance.
Yeah, so you just.
Go to project hearing on projects, it may end up being more than our bond issue, we have money in the bank. And when, when, when we get bids in. Then that's when the rubber hits the road and you see what can be.
The other thing is, is you can go under the hat of, if you're saying thirty, you can just make it all controlled. You just have to go through those parameters, so that's why I think it's good to have those conversations to see. Is, is the overarching to keep it non-controlled? Or is it the amount of projects that we can do, if you're saying, no, this Hibbert is important now, not in two or three years? Then maybe we need to talk about having a controlled project and making it all one lump sum pro- or controlled with a thirty million to John's point. I can ask the question to Jane, she deals with these, I mean, that, this is her daily.
What's the problem with a controlled project again?
You have to do a petitioner remonstrance or you, or a. If you go with a control.
The negative to that is.
Well, I, I think if there is a sweet spot in the risk assessment, it is. Trying to get as much bang for our buck as we can without going to, with the R word, but going through the petitioner remonstrance process.
That is.
That gives us.
It sometimes can be divisive, divisive, depending on how.
Well, I mean, I think the referendum is inherently going. To generate, but before an element of opposition, okay? That's just by the nature of the beast. We've had one experience in the school corporation with a referendum and it took us a year to lay the groundwork for that, for a million dollar operating referendum. Under Bill Christopher. And we did everything from having bartenders and barbers and putitions and everybody in for breakfast and coffee to explain why we would. Needed a million and a half, actually, it was elementary counselors that was our, our poster child, counseling in the elementary schools. And that was a million to million and a half operating referendum. A long time ago, I was the, I worked at Plainfield Community Schools and they were in the situation. They had an old historical high school building.
They also had a lot of growth too.
But they really didn't have as much as, it, it, not as much as you think, they did, yes, have, have some growth. But they were in the process, obviously, that entire area was growing. They built a new high school. Turned their three middle schools into their one historical high school, renovated that. And closed all of their elementarys and put them in the middle school buildings. And then they eliminated the community middle schools, now there, and the reason I'm bringing that up, not because that's what I think we should do. I'm saying that in a community like that, it was, those were controversial. It was, they built a hundred and twenty million dollar high school building, but then when everybody opened it, it was like, whoa, this place is amazing. And the, and they, the community got to see what. The wow factor of, okay, here's what they're trying to do for the students and the, the entire corporation and the educational process. And I think it really brought that group. That community, even though it was turning into a suburban area, it really kind of brought it together. So I, I do think that even though there's gonna be arguments about it, it's, it's something that. It's the reason that you have these conversations.
Man, I'd send, I know Rosberg or how you've probably seen their new center, Devin, I've sent it to the board, I mean, it's, it's secondary sports in classrooms. And it's amazing, I mean, it's a, and it was sixteen million dollars. So, you know, you have a little, little heavier classroom bent on that. It's a pretty nice facility that does what you're talking about. Who did that, do you know Kevin?
Which direction, I'm, I'm just gonna ask, which direction do you want us to go? Because we have to, we have to make a plan if we're gonna stay within the, the next calendar date.
And with, with respect to such question, especially being the uh, the nature of the, the hour and, and the uh, marathon we had. Would it be fair to our trustee just of the food, the thought that has been presented? As they provide us with such a direction of blame to take. Relatively soon date, but um, we definitely would love. I'm all in on Hibbert if you hadn't wondered.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in on Hibbert too. John, I'm interested in hearing.
Well, I will find that question out, I think that that's a good question, um.
I do have a question about just Baxter, I guess, real quick, because the playground and equipment and the fencing there is equal to Starr and Vale. We have a handful of transitioning Baxter students. I'm not saying they're not worthy of great playground, but you know, transitional students, they're from being in that building, which is hard for me to think that three hundred thousand there. Where Vale and Starr are the same three hundred thousand, I have to work my head around that, everyone's worthy.
I'm gonna be, I, I'm gonna put on my opinion hat right now. Because to me, every student is worth it. With, here's why I, I feel that way about Baxter, because they had, their playground hasn't been updated. And since it was the early learning center. It's a K twelve program. That they are limited in who can utilize recess. And it was a request of the principal because they truly have made it into more of a true school nature. And they are getting to the point where that is something that can be utilized and is a part of them. The other part is Starr and Vale has received updates in the last five years, like so they received new equipment. They received paint, they received, now, are they as worthy a percent? But that's why as much was designated to Baxter because they haven't had updates and new equipment is that much. Now, um, you know, we all have some quality, but their space is very limited. So we probably want to take out, we could put stuff in there or leave anything.
I would think if we're re-investing some things and thinking about spaces, maybe that's.
I understand it's a lot of money, right, and that's, that's just something, no, I just wanted to ask firstly, I have a question. I, it was, yeah, and, you know, I wanted to represent, just answer that question, it's very valid.
So our thought is, um, revisit this on the twenty-fourth or, or what's the?
Yeah, you know what, for, for, again, it's my, I just told me, I don't think for us as far as, yeah. Sooner than later, I would, I would be, um, uh, patient, that us, that us approach more, you know, as less personal and nothing else. Whether it goes, it has to make for the time, turn it, put a timeline over it, it's, that's all.
So if Jamie couldn't get that question, is there? And then I was even thinking, if we do some of those smaller projects, like million dollar HVAC. Take, let's say, a year, can we still like in our minds plan for a Hibbert?
That's what, that's what we were having this conversation here, because I said, I mean, there's nothing to say that you can't do twenty million now. And then, hey, in a year from now, because you see what the interest rates do. You see what the assessed values do, what this legislative session does and come back in a year and say, now let's go on Hibbert. And then, but you still have the capacity and then you're even closer to more capacity falling off then. And then you keep it non-controlled now, yeah, potential control, that's.
If you have control of the site now, which is, that may be Kevin's opinion, whether that.
But I think it's important to know so that we don't put. Chris's point, why did we put six hundred thousand, you know, that would be valid, if we know that that's gonna happen. Let's hopeful at six hundred thousand and move something up, a restaurant, right?
I, I appreciate the consultants that came on, so, I mean, I think ten million doesn't make sense. Especially with the issuance costs and whatnot, but that twenty million, it falls to fifteen. Even if it's a little above twenty, makes sense with the initial issuance costs and the, you can see the impact.
I asked their opinion, I didn't put them on the spot here, but that is something I asked them, I said, you know, if you're, if you're sitting in my seat, what, what do you say? Then, if you're sitting in their seat, what do you say? Because it's two different scopes. And they, they said the same, ten million doesn't really hit enough off to bang for the buck. Um, that twenty million, give, give or take, up or down, depending on contingencies. They, that's where they said their sweet spot um, was for.
It still leaves us that capacity.
Where you come back and do the Hibbert in a year.
And I think it gives you a little room, cause as we pointed out, we really don't know what we're dealing with until we get bids.
Correct, and, and that's the other thing, it may, I mean, I think just having the workers and the capacity to do it. Is going to be really hard to start this summer with some of it because of the sort of issues that we have. Because just finding people to bid sometimes is hard right now, but knowing our plan would be really nice. Because I've already, I mean, Kevin and I got the conversation.
The local market is going to be necessary for some things because you can't find enough of the, the skilled labor to do it here. And, and not saying that, you know, we don't want to, it's just sometimes there's just not enough people to go around, so. For everybody that needs things, so.
We definitely appreciate you all's activity, I know that when Mrs. Bowser, Mrs. Scott and I, that guy had a conversation. As to some public life and what I shared is, is that's, I'm part in with all of, of what's in front of us. Because I know I've heard a lot of conversations that's coming into this role for the past few years as to what some of the visionary items have been, so. Here it is.
I don't mean to like, I am just curious on, it is a, it's a. Multi-purpose building that encompasses steam with classroom capacity for other. Needs throughout the corporation, whether it be athletically or what, is that an option for us for that, that deals with some of the other things? Besides just the steam, but then some of the needs, multi-use.
Is this in the Rosberg facility? It's, it's athletic, but it does have classrooms, and if you roll some more heavy classrooms into that, I'll send you the link.
They do that same sort of concept and it would benefit. So what you're saying is in your mind, you're, you're vision, envisioning both of them utilizing. I'm thinking about all three programs too, at, at the Hibbert building, or at least, you know, cause they all could benefit from that open concept. Multi-functional.
Thing that we've talked about, I just wanna throw it out there is that when you, when you look at multiple um, programs. Utilizing applied skills with their like peers is something that we may consider, that may not look like it does. Because that program, you know, there's a lot of things that we could do with that, that might then change that concept. Whether it's in that building or somewhere else, so there's a lot of conversations to be had, I'm excited about it, thank you so much for having it.
Yeah, we, we did, we had that conversation for when we went to visit Hibbert. You know, they're kind of kept separate that they made the kitchen, but I just felt like. All, that whole group of students at Hibbert would be great for them to all interact a little more too.
And especially have the option to grow that capacity too would be good.
Yeah.
Alright, yeah.
Did we answer all the questions?
Before you return, I, I, okay, good. I wanna just thank Nicole for being president. Yes, thank you. Really appreciate your leadership style and how diplomatic you are and I know how much work that you put into it, how much work it's taken and just thank you for being president.
Thank you to the gentleman that joined our conversation. And just everybody talking things out and have an open mind and listen to everybody, so I just really appreciate it.
Doctor, I do have anything else?
Uh, outside of that, uh, since I appreciate you both's attendance, our next scheduled meeting will be two weeks from today, January.
Alright, listen to the bowlers.
I guess, the four-time uh, second championship, four-time county winners. And they will be uh, back in action a week from this upcoming Saturday uh, in New West. And so I'll be uh, providing you all with information as to the whereabouts and the location, I know that they. Amazing experience and we'll talk about it, we need to celebrate them, we invite them to the semester.
Thanks for being there, yeah.
I, I, I learned so much and it had a blast and uh, the community, the, the moderator, just. We'll, we'll talk about, I, I know so much more than just um, uh, what meets the eye, there's a lot of science that goes in.